You have a right to submit a written statement of disagreement that will be kept with your record. You also have the right to know how your health information is used and shared. Now, your provider is allowed to share your information for certain reasons without asking you first. Like when your doctors work together to determine how to best treat you when you're sick, or to report the flu when it's in your area. But in general, your providers can't give information to an employer, for example, without your permission. And if you'd like to know who has senior health information, you have the right to get a report. That's called an accounting of disclosures. HIPAA gives you the right to say how you want to be contacted. For example, you can tell your provider what phone number they should call to contact you, and whether they can leave a message. HIPAA also gives you the right to request that your information not be shared with certain people or organizations. All these rights are spelled out in the notice of privacy practices, which is usually given to you or posted at your doctor's office or hospital. Be sure to read this notice carefully. It lets you know exactly how your information will be used and shared, and how your rights are being protected. And lastly, if you think any of these rights have been violated, you have the right to file a complaint. We're serious about working with you to protect your health information. Know your rights. To get started, just visit the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office for Civil Rights at hhs.gov/OCR. Your health information, your rights. Whether your health information is stored on paper or electronically, you have the right to keep it private. Those rights are protected under a law known as HIPAA, the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act. HIPAA gives you important rights. First off, you have the right to see or get a copy of your medical records. Sometimes you might not be able to see certain parts of the full record, but you always have the right to ask. If you find a mistake in your record, you have the right to request to have it corrected. If you disagree with your doctor or health plan about certain information in your record, you have a right to submit a written statement of disagreement that will be kept with your record. You also have the right to know how your health information is used and shared. Now, your provider is allowed to share your information for certain reasons without asking you first. Like when your doctors work together to determine how to best treat you when you're sick, or to report the flu when it's in your area. But in general, your providers can't give information to an employer, for example, without your permission. And if you'd like to know who has senior health information, you have the right to get a report. That's called an accounting of disclosures. HIPAA gives you the right to say how you want to be contacted. For example, you can tell your provider what phone number they should call to contact you, and whether they can leave a message. HIPAA also gives you the right to request that your information not be shared with certain people or organizations. All these rights are spelled out in the notice of privacy practices, which is usually given to you or posted at your doctor's office or hospital. Be sure to read this notice carefully. It lets you know exactly how your information will be used and shared, and how your rights are being protected. And lastly, if you think any of these rights have been violated, you have the right to file a complaint. We're serious about working with you to protect your health information. Know your rights. To get started, just visit the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office for Civil Rights at hhs.gov/OCR. Your health information, your rights. Whether your health information is stored on paper or electronically, you have the right to keep it private. Those rights are protected under a law known as HIPAA, the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act. HIPAA gives you important rights. First off, you have the right to see or get a copy of your medical records. Sometimes you might not be able to see certain parts of the full record, but you always have the right to ask. If you find a mistake in your record, you have the right to request to have it corrected. If you disagree with your doctor or health plan about certain information in your record, you have a right to submit a written statement of disagreement that will be kept with your record. You also have the right to know how your health information is used and-
Mike check, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Mike check, Swiget. Swiget, mic check, mic check. Tuesday, May of the 2nd, 2023, timestamp is 6:06. And for informational purposes, I'll say here and out there, City Council as well, that Mayor Pro Tem Vera Cruz has other obligations he will be answering tonight. So, first item that we have is discussing the agenda item, City Manager, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Oh, one thing, just real, get ahead of you. On consent agenda item number... Four... Mr. Coons had requested we move it. I made a note on one agenda here, on another. Consent agenda item 4B. Considered ordinance of the Duncanville City Council procurement. That one is moving to agenda item, wait a minute. Yeah, individual items? All right, consent agenda item 4B. Authorized control of procurement of Texas packer loaded. That is going to be moving to item for individual consideration. That will become item 5F. All right, thank you. So that, House keep, yes, sir?
I'd like to move 4C to item for individual consideration.
Item 4C is a request of City Council member, Mr. Harvey. That's considered approval of ordinance for partisan procurement. Moving item 4C, and gonna make that, that'll be moved to item 5G. Under individual consideration. Mr. Ambi, I know that changes your PowerPoint presentation, so we'll give you time up there with the rules. Okay. Let me add 5G. 5G is going to be from 4C. 4C, so Mr. Brown, you may omit discussing items 4B and 4C.
Yes, sir.
All right, sir, so thank you very much. Any other movements before we move on? Oh, okay, Mr. Brown, sir?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda item 4A, consider approval of draft City Council meeting minutes for regular and special call City Council meeting, March 21st, 2023, regular meeting, and March 30th, 2023, special call meeting. Consent agenda item D, consider a resolution approving the selection of professional engineering firms to provide professional engineering services to the city of Duncanville from May 2nd, 2023 through May 1st, 2028. And this item comes from our property works department, working with our purchasing department for engineering services. And Ms. Jackie and Mr. Ty over here, they're gonna answer any questions that the council may have. There's no questions, I'll move the consent agenda, item E. Item E, adoption of ordinance regarding the request of Ali Ossie, is that, is Mr. Ossie here? Is that the coroner? Applicant and owner for the approval of a zoning change from SF 10, single-family residential district to LOR, local office retail district on Southwood Commercial Lot 1, ACS 0.366, more commonly known as 1703 South Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Consent agenda item F, consider a resolution terminating the contract number 3220116 with right to landscape services incorporated for landscape services pursuant to Section C, clause 21.0 of the contract, termination whereby the city reserves the right to terminate the contract for convenience. And we've got Mr. Bart Stevenson and his team here to answer any questions that the council has in hand.
Think just, if you could, Mr. Stevenson or Mr. Brown, take like 15 minutes to go into detail on that particular termination, because it said that while they are or are not paying the bond, we're still going toward the termination, and so they do or do not pay the 93,000. So it just, as, just bring that into, into some more little bit of elaboration versus what we have right here.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir, this is a situation that we've had really since we brought Part B on as contractor to perform our mowing services last spring. They've been behind schedule regularly. We did have to issue a notice to cure very early on in the contract last year. It did get marginally better for a while, and the heat of the summer came in, things stopped growing quite so fast, and they caught up magically. So, this spring, they again started off on a bad foot. We've had a lot of issues with them mowing on, on schedule. So, they initiated a letter to the city asking to be removed or let out of the contract for convenience, and we negotiated a settlement, if you will, that they are paying to the city the difference in costs for us to move on to the second contractor who was awarded last year. So the difference, so the city's out zero money for this year moving to the second contractor, even though there's quite a significant difference in cost. They have paid 98,000? So we are not invoking their bond, so their bond will not be called upon, so they will not be paying any more through that process, is that correct? It's Good Earth. And they're familiar with the city, they, we use them for, I know they've recently taken on quite a few contracts in the city of Dallas. We've already been working with them since we've been working through this process in the last four weeks to get them up to speed, so they're ready to start next Monday.
We've already earlier approved them as a secondary service provider in the event that we had to go through the termination, so. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Consent agenda item 4G, consider a resolution authorizing the receipt of a grant from the Edward Arden Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, JAG, to provide funding for the police department to purchase a modular vehicle barrier system with a total grant value of $63,689.54. And Mayor Council, this is a reimbursable grant for a police department to use for better protection for our citizens during our large events like July 4th and so forth. And Chief LeVignan and his team, Mr. Johnson, answer any additional questions that you may have.
If, if you would, where's Chief? Here you are. I, I'm trying, I was looking for a picture and I didn't see one. Could you just give it like a- I just, I, I'm trying, I was looking for a picture and I didn't see one, can you just give it like a, a brief visualization of what this thing looks like?
Well, they're, they come in several different, um, I guess, product lines, but this is basically to protect, uh, unfortunately, we saw what happened. I believe it was a couple of years ago in Wisconsin around Christmas time, where they were having a parade and, um, some individual decided to do something, uh, that was, uh, terrorizing event to that community. And what we've done in the past, we've used different vehicles, larger vehicles that the city has to block this, it may be more aesthetically pleasing, but they do get the job done.
So, being a modular system, that's the piece of it that we're, what it is?
They interlock so they can expand the roadway.
Ah, okay.
And then come put them together.
That I see. Okay, I was thinking of some kind of vehic, veh, modular vehicle system.
Yeah, and, you know, be careful giving out too much, because we don't want people to get...
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Alright. That takes us to item number two, uh, the City Council calendar, uh, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we have a new time for the National Day of Prayer, it's October, at the Duncanville Recreation Center, on Thursday, May fourth. Keep Duncanville beautiful, has cleanup day, has the park at five one five Hill, Hill City Drive on the sixth, also election day, it's a new date for the National Police Memorial Day, it's at six P M, June end, um, here, May fifteenth, on Thursday, expected to last for at least thirty minutes. We've moved the location, I mean, the date of the official end of this date to May sixteenth, which is in terms of the city's practice. And, uh, we still need, uh, further consideration and cancellation, a reschedule of the July fourth meeting by the City Council. And there's still not a firm time on the council pre-budget workshop, June eighth or fifteenth.
So, we're looking for approval this evening to see if we cancel the City Council meeting on July fourth. Their consensus for the City Council to cancel the July fourth City Council meeting. Yes. And we have a parade that day as well, for that night.
And just a correction there on the, uh, Police Memorial, that's a, that's a mistake, that should be May fifteenth, Monday.
The date is correct.
Yeah.
The day of the week.
The date is on Monday. Yeah, I'm looking at here. The date is correct.
It's correct on this calendar as, as well.
And also, uh, please note on June seventeenth, June seventeenth, Juneteenth, which would be a celebration of the four cities. And the best southwest partnership I've had, so on the calendar, I believe, I'm looking on their overview. June seventeenth, yes. It doesn't show that the four cities are involved in this one, but this is, this is our turn, the city of Duncanville, uh, to host Juneteenth. So, this is gonna be a very, very large event, probably be the largest and the best we've ever had, right, Mr. Stevenson?
Absolutely, we'll be back.
Okay. Uh, let's see. So, we have consensus on canceling the July fourth City Council meeting, City Secretary? And the other comments, thoughts?
May twenty-seventh, fire truck pool, special.
May twenty-seventh, fire truck pool. There was something else on the day twenty-seventh. Oh. Something else I got it. Alright. Any other thoughts on calendar additions, changes? Okay. Thank you, City Secretary. Alright, moving on to item number three. Staff to present a briefing council regarding bond project status and funding shortfalls.
Yes, sir. Mr. Casey is making this presentation for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, we, we've had some updates on some of the bond, bond projects. And, uh, I believe it was Mayor Gordon said it might be beneficial for us to give an update on where they all stand, where the funding shortfalls are. Tonight, what we're going to do is a brief overview, um, there's a, there was a Excel spreadsheet included in your packet. I've got it up here again, and it's amended just a little bit for some more up-to-date information. We plan on coming back in a couple of meetings, uh, and providing more in-depth on each one of the projects, where we stand, expected completion dates, um, you know, possible sources for covering the shortfalls that we are, that we do have. But we did wanna go ahead and let you know where we stand currently. We started with the initial cost estimate for each one, so you can see up here, we've listed the project. We've got basically what was passed last, the initial cost estimate of the project. And then what we did over in this column is the cost of the project at, at the beginning of it, essentially, once it had been designed, planned, bid out, what the initial cost came out to be, dedicated funding. So, this comes from not only just the bond and the funding that was approved by the bond, but any additional funds, whether it came out of CIP or whether it came out of department's budget to add to the bond funds to try and bring these pro, uh, projects into fruition. And then over here is a shortfall, and then we did a potential additional shortfall. Now, a couple of things to note is that four hundred thousand dollars from the pavilions project and five hundred thousand dollars from the, uh, trails project are actually included in this Harrington Park two point nine million funding number. Uh, because what we did is since the trails were undefined and some trails were going into Harrington Park anyway, we moved that funding to the Harrington Park and included it in that, and same with the pavilions. There was a pavilion for Harrington Park, so we just took that number, put it in that two point nine. And that leaves a shortfall of two point four over there. Uh, we do have two projects that are complete, and with Daniel Dale, we're one that's close to complete. And those, we're not anticipating any additional shortfall than what we're already currently showing. And Armstrong Park, I believe Mr. Stevenson said, uh, we can probably cover the twenty-one thousand and not have any additional shortfall there. And then what was not on your spreadsheet in your packet, but what I've done here is break down. Currently, our total shortfall is just over seven million, but we do have the one point eight million available from the Man, Main Street at Camp Wisdom project that didn't go forward. Our shortfall was projected at two point one million because of the total cost of that project, once it was shown out. So, you're not just subtracting the one point eight, you're subtracting the two point one shortfall, which leaves us closer to five million right now for total, total shortfall.
So, we need to talk some big numbers, I guess, fire station being one point four billion dollars in shortfall. And any ideas where that money can come from?
We do have, um, we had another column in the larger when we start breaking down these. Uh, there, I know Ms. Jackie can probably speak to some of the estimates that we came up with where we could make funds, including, uh, I think there were some savings on the roof as we started, and there were some other ideas.
That's correct, uh, we also looked at, um, ARPA funds that are remaining to cover that project. But that is a discussion that will have to be had with the council in the future regarding, you know, how you all would choose to use the remaining ARPA funds.
So, does that remaining bucket of ARPA funds adequate enough to fund this, should we decide to do so when you present it?
Yes, sir.
It is? I guess, I'm making sure that's, it's gonna be an available source of money for us, okay?
Okay, so, main and capital, if you would say, is one point eight million available for future projects if reallocated, so what kind of projects can that money be reallocated to?
My understanding that since it was a bond, that would have to, uh, be a council decision and then possibly a voter decision.
Doesn't it say in the ordinance that?
Yep, yes, it does, it says generally other related, uh, public purpose projects, so it's pretty broad. That's traditionally the, uh, element that's funded, other street related projects, etc.
It's good when the ordinance is broad.
Yes.
It provides a lot of canvas to paint them.
Yes, it does.
Is it gonna require, Mr. Casey just said it may require a council, is it gonna be necessary?
And you'll have to allocate it.
We will reallocate those monies to some specific project with the council up?
Yes.
So, so possibly it could be reallocated to one of these other projects?
Yes, it's true. It's true. And that's typically done, because bonds usually are issued over a period of time, as they spend, so things, because of inflation, other related matters, might have to be reallocated, it's not uncommon.
So, then there's a possibility then that we will need to do another bond issue and then maybe do the five million dollars?
Oh, so what we're gonna do is, is, this is really just a brief overview of our outstanding bond projects. What we're gonna do is come back with a more detailed presentation with various funding options. ARPA funds is not only the, the funding mechanism, but we're gonna bring a more detailed presentation, we're gonna have various options that the council can look at and give, and you give us direction of how you want those funds used.
Okay, well, I'm sure the next person will be real interested in that.
Well, when I requested this particular update, it was because we had, in some of the quarterly updates from, from the directors, they would say this project is doing such and such, and it's gonna be late, and we have a quarterly update from another director saying this particular project's gonna be late, this is what's, I said. So, my request was, how about compiling all of these projects into one particular spreadsheet so we can see it overview, that's what we have today, to take a look at. But what it doesn't do is, it's like, exactly what you're saying, is how we're going to find that five million dollars, use that five billion dollars to cover some of the shortfalls identified here.
So, in, in a future overview, uh, is this information, any additional information be provided in total, or will you be going project by project?
We're gonna, we're gonna give you every project.
I see it as project by project.
Project by, okay, alright.
Uh, question for Mr. Stevenson, if I may, Mr. Brown. On Armstrong Park, at least twice a month, somebody's asking me about the splash pad in the fourth. And at least twice a month, I'm giving a very obtuse answer that I really don't know, but where are we on the splash pad in the fourth?
It's a great question. I didn't have, I didn't have an answer. Uh, I don't have an exact date, but, uh, the last date that was given to me was May twenty-second to start fencing off the properties, start demolition, soon shortly thereafter. Um, so I think by the end of the month, we should see some activity at the latest.
So, this involves splash pad and add for?
It'd be for both.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Stevenson, and so, if I saw something correctly, there is a good buy of that?
There is, I said my presentation this evening for our quarterly report, there's a, we are planning a, a last play day for Armstrong, for folks to come out. We'll have free snow cones for the kids, we'll have, uh, some storyboards out there showing what's coming soon. I hope you get a bit excited, because shortly after that, we'll, we'll be having fencing, you know, shut down for about six months.
And selling or giving away pieces of the floor?
Giving away.
Giving away?
Not, not, not that day, or, you know.
Right.
We'll have to compile and make sure it has all the nails taken out, those kinds of things, we'll make some more available for those. Yes.
So, so, another question about moving forward, uh, a couple of pieces of information I'm curious about with this. Will the future versions also show expected starting completion dates?
Yes, it's, it's gonna be really detailed, in fact, we'll have locations, we'll have photographs, we'll have findings, we'll have, uh, this same information up here as well.
For example, previous City Council meetings, Mr. Stevenson, I had to, how should we say, uh, make open apologies to the Duncanville baseball, um, crew, organization, because we promised them by the opening of this season that that, it's gonna be, the concession area is, is gonna be built by the time they open the season. And the results of COVID and other shortfalls and other, we missed that. And so, Mr. Stevenson has made a personal contact with the Duncanville Baseball Association to let them know that we're letting them. Because I stood up in front of hundreds of people and, because he told me I could, I made that quick. So, we need to be very open with those individuals to let them know how big we are at that.
And, and I wanna thank you for this presentation as well, because this is something that I feel like should have already been started, done and going. So, I'm glad to see that this is, that we're gonna get this pushed through.
Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Contreras.
Um, can I put the screen back up?
Sure.
Okay, uh, could you remind me, um, briefly what happened to the Main Street and Camp Wisdom project?
I can do that.
I was not saying, I was, yeah, I was not here.
I can do that. This, this was supposed to be, as we designed it as a city, we designed it, that we were gonna talk to BNSF about completing that grade and doing something about the safety of that particular intersection that had been made in, in Camp Wisdom. So, with the engineering, BNSF got involved, of course, BNSF is quite always the, the great player that we'd like them to be. They were a player in this one, but they said, in essence, we will do something, this is BNSF talking. They see that the optimum solution is an overpass. To take Camp, to take Main Street over Camp Wisdom, just if you go to Midlothian, uh, that was the Ninth Street, I guess, there's that bridge over, over the railroad tracks at Ninth and Midlothian. They wanted to do the same thing here. That cost was well over three million dollars, which is far and above the one point eight that we have projected in the bond program. So, when we as a council looked at that particular proposal and said, you can't go anywhere, then there were options, what do we do? What can we do with the one point eight million dollars? That's when we went to the county and said, we have one point eight million dollars, we can't use it as we originally programmed for the, the overpass, because it's, it's out of our hands on that one in terms of accountability. And they, without asking us, redesigned use of that one point eight million dollars to create a roundabout, which would eliminate Santa Fe, it would eliminate hands, and it would put a roundabout, uh, right in the middle of downtown. And we as a council voted not to have that done. Uh, we, we didn't feel that that particular design was good for the city, and the council decision not to do that. So, that one point eight million dollars then became available for other purposes.
It didn't grade out with Dallas Council, neither. So, that's when they changed the focus towards.
Thank you for that, uh, last question. Um, I know this is a, uh, budget shortfall presentation, but can, publicly, can we get a date on the expected, uh, uh, finish date? Finish date for Daniel Dale?
Ms. Jackie?
So, the substantial completion date of the Daniel Dale project is as of the end of this month. And so, that's what we're pushing the contractor to achieve, so, uh, just about all the paving has been done. What we have remaining is we have the monument, we have irrigation, we have the planting, so we're dealing with them on a daily basis. You know, letting them know that we're going to try and get this project done. So, and, and that's what we did in order to get the, um, eastbound, you know, segment of pavement completed. We were on them constantly to do that work.
Alright, thank you.
Ms. Jackie, thank you for your persistence.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, that concludes our work session briefing items. Um, Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Need some advice, uh, we have two executive sessions following, as I get a point on the agenda. Uh, and the two of you feel we can cover these two executive sessions between now and seven o'clock. If not, uh, we will do one or the other and come back at the end.
They're listed that way, it's really one topic.
So we're gonna talk about both of them at the same time, but I doubt very seriously whether you will be able to finish it by seven.
Then I think the best thing to do is that we will take these two executive sessions, item one and two, move to the end of our city council session tonight. Uh, make a note of that. So those, that executive session and the action to be taken as a result of those two executive sessions is gonna be covered by H. Alright. Um, folks, uh, that leaves us twenty-five minutes between now and the beginning of city council. So we will recess. Timestamp on that is gonna be six thirty-six. And please be in your seats ready to go with around seven to five or so. Thank you.
Confirming once again, we have sound and we have broadcast. Short delay. We are ready to go. Thank you very much. The timestamp is seven o'clock, and we are convening our Duncanville City Council meeting on May the second of two thousand twenty-three. Thank you very much for your consideration and your attendance here tonight. As authorized by Section five fifty-one point zero seventy-one of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convenient to close executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. I will take this moment to let you know that we have some movement of the items on the agenda that we discussed in the briefing session. I'll go over that in more detail when we get to them. And we will be doing the executive session items number one and two at the total conclusion of all the business tonight of our city meeting. City Council reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or align the regular session or call to executive sessions or order a business at any time prior to adjournment, which we have done. In accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor issued March sixteenth of two thousand twenty, as extended, the City Council for the City of Duncanville will conduct a city council regular meeting in person, broadcast by website and social media channels, and by video conference, which we had begun at six P M. this evening in order to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, and to slow the spread of the COVID nineteen pandemic. This open meeting is being conducted in person and is being broadcast by website and social media channels. One note of housekeeping, Mayor Pro Tem Vera Cruz is not able to attend tonight for personal reasons. So with that, I'd like to ask Pastor Chris Gutierrez to come forward and give us the invocation. Pastor Chris, please rise.
Father, we thank you so much for this day. I thank you that your mercies are new this morning, and that Father, you're so good to us, so faithful to us. Father, we thank you for the incredible privilege that we get to live in this beautiful city of Duncanville. Father, right now I pray a special blessing and protection over all the men and women that served as first responders here in our city. Father, we pray over our mayor and all our city officials here in this council. I'm asking that you would give them wisdom to govern well, give them a thirst for justice and righteousness, give them the confidence to do what is good and pleasing to you. Lord, give them the ability to work in unity even when there's disagreement, Father. Father, I pray a special blessing and covering over each and every one of their lives personally and their families, Father. I pray over the agenda that is set before them today, that you would guide them and lead them in making decisions in effect on wonderful city. Father, we commit this to you, we seal this to you in the mighty, wonderful, masculine name of Jesus. Amen.
Pastor Chris, let us put you on the podium, for favor. Señor Gutierrez, por favor. Word for word, verbatim. Amen. Thank you. Please join me in pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you. Please be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a number of proclamations tonight. The first one is consider proclamation recognizing April thirtieth through May the sixth, two thousand twenty-three as National Small Business Week, and presenting this is going to be City Council member-at-large, Mr. Patrick Harvey. Receiving, Mr. Gus Garcia, Clay Mansell, and Mr. Jeremiah Brewer of our of our Development Services Squad.
So, good afternoon, friends and neighbors here in Duncanville. My name is Patrick J. Harvey Senior, and it is my privilege and honor to read to you this proclamation from the office of the mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas. And it reads, whereas America's strongest economic growth in almost forty years has been driven by the resilience of our small businesses who, despite a worldwide pandemic, continue to pioneer innovative solutions to our country's greatest challenges and create opportunities for families and workers. And whereas when we support small business, local communities preserve their unique culture while creating jobs for our citizens. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since nineteen sixty-three to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the United States Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas the City of Duncanville supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, Barry O. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby call upon all citizens of Duncanville and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of April thirtieth through May the sixth, two thousand twenty-three as National Small Business Week. Thank you kindly.
And next on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing May fourth as the National Day of Prayer. I will make this proclamation, and receiving it will be Pastor Chris Gutierrez from Arise Church, pastor. And Señor Gutierrez, tom again. For information purposes, Pastor Chris has been the organizer for the National Day of Prayer in the City of Duncanville for the past few years, and it's only fitting that he received this proclamation today. Whereas, in nineteen eighty in nineteen eighty-eight, the Congress by Public Law one zero zero dash three zero seven, as amended, called on the President to issue each year a proclamation designating the first Thursday in May as the National Day of Prayer, on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and meditation at churches and groups and as individuals. That is a quote. And whereas, on this National Day of Prayer, Americans reaffirm that prayer guides and strengthens our nation, and we express with humility and gratitude, quote, "our firm reliance on the protection of divine providence," end quote. As one nation under God, we share a legacy of faith that sustains and inspires us and a heritage of religious liberty. And whereas, from our earliest days, our dependence on God has brought us to seek His divine counsel and unfailing wisdom. Our leaders have often encouraged their fellow citizens to seek wisdom from God and have recognized God's power to lead our nation ahead to brighter days. And whereas, when the prospects for our independence seem bleak, General George Washington proclaimed the National Day of, quote, "fasting, humiliation, and prayer, humbly to supplicate the mercy of Almighty God," end quote. Following the devastating destruction of the Civil War, President Lincoln delivered his second inaugural address and invoked the power of prayer to, quote, "to bind up the nation's wounds," end quote. And more than one hundred years later, President Reagan noted our long reliance on prayer throughout our history, writing that, quote, "Through the storms of revolution, civil war, and the great world wars, as well as during times of disillusionment and disarray, the nation has turned to God in prayer for deliverance," end quote. Therefore, I, Barry Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, do hereby proclaim May fourth, two thousand twenty-three, as a day for all citizens of Duncanville, Texas, to join together on this National Day of Prayer to seek God's divine presence and guidance and blessing over our city, its businesses, its places of work, and its many houses of worship. We also join together to seek God's divine help, blessing, and prosperity over our nation and our state. Thank you. Pastor Chris, it is my honor to present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You know, it's a blessing to be a part of a city that believes in the power of prayer and a city in leadership that know where our true help comes from. So we're grateful to live in this wonderful city. Thank you, Mayor.
Our next item, item C, is a proclamation recognizing May seventh through the thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three as Drinking Water Week, and presenting this is Councilmember Karen Cherry. And receiving our waterworks guys and public works, David, Matt, Brianna, and Jackie.
Good evening. Whereas water is most, water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves as a vital role in daily life, serving as essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life our city enjoys. And whereas tep water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, we are good stewards of water, infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas, the city... The citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source of water from pollution and practice water conservation. Now, therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, does hereby call upon all citizens of Duncanville and upon all patriotic civics and educational organizations to observe the week of May 7th through the 13th, 2023, as Drinking Water Week.
I'd like to mention that the folks you're looking at up here, the ones responsible for when you turn on your tap, you have quality water and you have pressure and everything that you need to do your dishes and your clothes and your smoothies and everything else. These folks do a tremendous unseen job in taking care of our water supply. We thank you very, very much for all that you do. The next proclamation is recognizing May 15th, 2023, as Police Memorial Day and May 14th through the 20th as National Police Week. Presenting, Mr. Councilmember Don McBurnett. Receiving, Police Chief Mark Levigny. Assistant Police Chief Chris Fries. Marshall Johnson, whom I call Marshall Dillon because he looks like him. And Officer... And Officer Pinera. Thank you.
All right. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of Law Enforcement Agency of the City of Duncanville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of Duncanville. And whereas, it's important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of Law Enforcement Agency of the City of Duncanville unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, on the behalf of Mayor Barry L. Gordon, City of Duncanville, do hereby call upon all citizens of Duncanville, upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week with the appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers of the City of Duncanville, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community and doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call all citizens of the City of Duncanville to observe May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice to their community, become disabled or in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Thank you, Councilmen. And if I could, just real quickly, on Monday, May 15th at 6:00 PM, please join us in front of our police station for our ceremony that will honor our fallen and give us an opportunity to rededicate our focus on protecting you, the citizens of Duncanville. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all. And the next proclamation we have is National... Recognizing National Public Works Week, and presenting this, Councilmember Greg Concheras. And receiving, the Waterworks Gang, the Public Works Gang, the Streets Gang, with Kelly, adding Kelly to the group.
I'm particularly proud to present this proclamation as a former twenty-eight-and-a-half-year member of the Public Works Department of Duncanville. It makes me proud to be able to do this. Whereas, public works, infrastructure, facilities, services are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and of vital importance to sustainable communities and the health, safety, and well-being of the people of Duncanville. And whereas, such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, engineers, managers, employees from your local public works department who are responsible for and plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, public buildings, structures, facilities, and who deliver solid way services, transit, and fleet services, which are essential to serve our citizens. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff our public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas, the men and women of the Public Works Department of the City of Duncanville unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, does hereby call upon the citizens of Duncanville and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week.
Thank you to all. And just anecdotally, I have mentioned it before. I've been in some conferences where they've asked all the attendees to say, "What's the most important job in your city?" And a lot of people say, "Well, it's the mayor." And I always said, "No, it's Director Public Works." Because Director Public Works is the one responsible for water, for lights, for streets, for franchises, for streetlights, and everything that goes along with that. So, you and I touch public works every moment of every day of our lives, the most important job in the city in this person's perspective. Thank you to Jackie Colton, interim Public Works Director. That concludes our proclamations. Moving on to Item F, Patrick Harvey, Councilmember-at-Large, Chairman of the Audit Committee, will present the findings and recommendations of the Audit Committee at this City Council meeting. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin, I would like to ask the members of the Finance Committee to come up and join with me at this particular time. Ms. Clark, Ms. Natali, Councilmember McBurnett, Councilmember Coons. Let me begin by thanking the members of this committee for contributing their time and their talent to ensuring the public trust in the management of the resources that they provide. On... Just recently, and I'm kind of doing this off-script, so bear with me. Just recently, I became aware of concerns that were addressed that I interpreted as a question on the stewardship that I exercise with this organization. Stewardship is very important to me. Some of you may remember, some years ago when I first started, I got really concerned about my name and how it was being used. And so, I tried to maintain a professional decorum at all times, except for when my name is used in what I consider to be an inappropriate manner. It is very important to me. I'm old-school about my name. And so, I ask this group of people that you see here, your neighbors, to join with me in taking a deeper dive into the things that were mentioned to ascertain and discover the real situation. And so, we did. Again, thanks to the members of this Finance Committee. And for the next few moments, may I share with you what we found? One, that the city's external auditor, Marlon Williams, confirmed that the city has not and does not maintain two sets of books. Two, that the existence of spreadsheet use... That the existence of spreadsheet foreuse by the Finance Department prior to 2021 was not abnormal or suspicious. Three, that the fiscal year 2022 audit was due March 31st, 2023, and such audit has not been started as of April 20th, 2023. Four, that the finance staff is unable to confirm the completion date for the fiscal year '22 audit. Five, that the city's bank account has not been reconciled since September, 2022, and is currently not reconciled. Six, that the financial statement or reports appear to be complete and inaccurate since there was not a reconciliation of the bank statements and accounts. Seven, that the members of the Audit Committee raise concerns about the accuracy of internal financial reports based on unreconciled bank statements. Recommendations that the interim city manager immediately take whatever steps necessary to correct the above-stated findings with all deliberate speed. Two, that the Audit Committee monitor the 2022 audit process and report to City Council. So, if I were to lump all these things into one general category, I would say pervasive inattention to detail. So again, I thank the Finance Committee for working with me on y'all's behalf. And that is the record of what happened. Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey, Chairman of the Audit Committee for the City of Duncanville. Members of the Audit Committee, on behalf of the City Council and its citizens, we appreciate the time spent to examine these issues and to provide the interim city manager with these recommendations. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number two on the agenda, reports. Now, at this time, as is our practice during election season, we will block out the audio portion. We will continue with the video portion. And since we have had some past technical issues, we're going to make absolutely certain that the muting of the audio portion is in effect before we proceed. So, City Secretary and Assistant... Interim Assistant City Manager, please take whatever actions are necessary to ensure that the audio portion is being blocked before I continue. please take whatever actions are necessary to ensure that the auto portion is being blocked before I continue. I want to do a check. Make sure, give me assurances, please. 100% we are online, both audio and video. We are good to go. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would the city secretary please read the consent agenda items, noting that items B and C have been moved to item for individual consideration?
Consent agenda. For A, consider approval of draft city council meeting minutes for the regular and special called city council meetings. March 21st, 2023, regular meeting and March 30th, 2023, special called meeting. For D, adoption of ordinance regarding the request of Ali Asis, applicant and owner for the approval of a zoning change from SF 10, single family residential district to LOR, local office.
Excuse me, nope. Item D, start to consider resolution approving selection of professional engineering firms.
Consider a resolution approving the selection of professional engineering firms to provide professional engineering services to the city of Duncanville from May 2nd, 2023 through May 1st, 2028. Next item is adoption of an ordinance regarding the request of Ali Asis, applicant and owner for the approval of a zoning change from SF 10, single family residential district to LOR, local office retail district on Softwood Commercial, Lot 1 ACS 0.366, more commonly known as 1703 South Main Street in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. Consider a resolution terminating contract number 3220116 with Brightview Landscape Services Incorporated for landscape services pursuant to Section C, Clause 21.0 of the contract. Termination whereby the city reserves a right to terminate the contract for convenience and consider a resolution authorizing the receipt of a grant from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, JAG, to provide funding for the police department to purchase a modular vehicle barrier system with a total grant value of $63,689.54.
Thank you, city secretary. Chair Lynn attended motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. McNabb, and a second by Mr. Koontz. You're voting to approve consent agenda items as modified. Please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. As stated, we are moving item five on the executive sessions to the very end of our session tonight. So item C, conducted. Let me give the instructions on how we will do the public hearings because we have. Did I miss? Oh, I sure did. I'm sorry. Five B is in Bravo. Consider resolution approving the Star Transit Interlocal Cooperative Agreement between Star Transit and the city of Duncanville, Texas, presenting Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. Gus Garcia, managing director for development services. Here today to talk to you about an interlocal agreement that we are asking the council to approve regarding Star Transit. This is a item that has been brought to the council on a number of occasions. If you recall, in 2022, this body requested that we provide an alternate transportation service for the senior citizens and underserved citizens of the community. We did go out for a grant. We're from the North Central Texas Council of Government, Dallas County. And I'm happy to report that we did get approved for a grant for a total over three years of approximately $693,000. So we're excited about that. This particular grant will provide transportation to anyone residing in our service area that may ride. Destinations could include job locations, educational facilities, non-emergency medical appointments, senior centers, and career training facilities. Star Transit threw an interlocal cooperative agreement timeline. Just to give you the history, May 17th, 2022, city council regular meeting, work session. Kim Britton of Star Transit gave a presentation to the city council about the public transportation service. City council authorized staff to move forward with the proposal. City council authorized staff to move forward with the proposal. August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, D C E D C Board of Directors agreed to a thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollar commitment in funding for Star Transit in F Y twenty-three. Tonight, the interlocal cooperative agreement is brought before the city council for approval. What they are providing is twenty hours of transit service per day, Monday through Friday, six A M. to six P M. We can potentially modify these times, but we are still meeting to determine what would be their best routes with staff. Demand response, pre-booked, origin to destination trips, this is a service for our citizens to be able to call Star Transit and get a pre-booked trip, whether it be in the morning or the afternoon, for again, citizens in the community. And Star Now, which is basically kind of a local Uber that Star Transit would be providing for our senior citizens and underserved community, and although everybody can use it, these services are very, very affordable, much, much cheaper than what, let's say, an Uber or a, one of these drive services would provide. It's a three-year grant for the Transportation Improvement Program, the city is required to match federal fund grants in an eighty-twenty split for the first two years of the grant period, after initial two years, the city's match will increase to forty percent. The average daily service hours will be twenty, the cost per hour is fifty-two dollars, now that rate is based on the three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, that is the total cost, but again, it's an eighty-twenty match. The base annual cost of service is approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and then the federal urban transit funding is two hundred and eight dollars. When you break down the funding, it would cost about two hundred and fifty dollars a day to provide mobility for residents in need. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, any questions from council? Okay, first, Mr. Harvey, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gus, thanks for the presentation, tell me again, what would be the source of funding for our share?
Oh, the D C E D C is funding the first year for thirty-two thousand to thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars.
And, and moving forward, would the source of funding for any future arrangements between us and Star Transit would be the E D C?
It could be, council member, at large, it all depends on what this body would like to do via the interim city manager and how we approach that. We could ask the E D C for continued funding, or we could enter it into our budget for the new years.
Thank you.
Mr. Koontz, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and that was pretty much my question, so we haven't identified funding for sure, this is how we're going to fund the increase after two years. You've got some ideas about it, but not necessarily where it might come from.
That's correct, council member, so the, the twenty percent match is actually sixty-two, sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And so, because we're starting mid-year, the actual cost is approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. So we're funding, the E D C is funding thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, so there's additional thirty-three hundred dollars that would have to be funded, that could come from the ordinary budget, or, you know, we could find those funds, we could approach the E D C again. The ordinance before you today is for thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, so there still would be an additional three thousand dollars we would need to find, but again, it's a small amount based on what the total cost would be in the agreement that's before you. So, that's why it's thirty-one thousand, two hundred, not sixty-two thousand, five hundred, next year, it will be sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the full year, but as I mentioned, we're starting according to this resolution ordinance, we'd be starting on June first, so the services would now become available to the citizens as of June first, this year.
So, and I'm a little slow on this, so would that be something we'd have to budget this year for twenty-three, twenty-four, or something we'd have to budget for twenty-four, twenty-five?
You know, that would be a question I would ask the interim city manager, it's approximately thirty-three hundred dollars, we could go back to the E D C and ask for those funds, which we do have them available, and I'm sure the city has those funds available as well, so we could certainly do that if we needed to. But, the following year is what we'd have to budget, but I'm sure we have the funds available right now if we need them. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, sir, and I have one other question, if you could go back on the slides. Yeah, oh, that was it, so the, the demand responses, are there a limited number of slots that, that will be available for that?
Right now, we estimated the cost, Star Transit has, kind of has a, they have an idea of what would be needed based on usage, we anticipate there's probably going to be a ramping up of the usage once people start to understand its ability and what it provides. And so, once that starts, once we start meeting our twenty hours, if you will, every day, then there would be a, I guess, a reestimation of what we would need, and those costs would be at fifty-two dollars an hour. And that fifty dollars an hour for service, if that's in excess of what we're already paying for, then we'd have to pay for it out of our budget.
I guess I'm asking for, on the demand response, you know, where you can have it pre-booked, or, you know, these, I guess, special trips, could it get to a point where they say, well, we've reached our capacity for the number of individuals that can, you know, be a part of this program, the demand response part of it?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, if we have a lot of people start to use it, I'm sure we could get to that point pretty quickly. They, they have told us that usually the first year that doesn't happen, they start to get a kind of a gauge on how many people are using it, if they're using it, there is a nominal fee for each trip. I think we presented that in the initial presentation, I think it was close to, it was between, the rates are not on here, I apologize, we can get those for you, but the rates are anywhere from two to six dollars throughout the city, depending, anywhere within the city, so it's very affordable. So, that's in addition to the services we're providing, so if it starts to get more than what hours we're providing, obviously, we'll have to relook at it and make some adjustments. So this is a pilot program to see how well the citizens respond to it, whether or not they're using it, but we'll certainly be monitoring it, and we will be getting quarterly updates, and we'll be working with them on a monthly basis to make those determinations, and we can certainly come back to you and present that if you'd like.
Okay, so it's a pilot program, so that, that answers my other question, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mac Burnett, please.
Thank you, and, and, Mr. Koontz, I appreciate your questions, because mine's a little bit in the, in the same line, Mr. Garcia, is there going to be any type of public hearings or anything regarding this service? Is there going to be a city, is there going to be a city town hall, or, or anything like that determine how this is going to be used?
Yes, sir, as part of the grant funding program with the COG, Star Transit is required to host two town hall meetings for the citizens after this resolution is passed, and once it's passed, those will take place in the month of May for a June first start date, so they can't start until those town hall meetings are held, there'll be two of them. So we'll be scheduling those, preferably at the senior center.
Perfect. I, I think this is a quality service, so therefore I am going to make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay, we have a, a motion to approve, I don't think we're done with discussion yet, but is there a second, since there is now a motion on the floor?
I second.
We have a second by council member Cherry, thank you. I don't see any other comments, but, but, yes, I do, Mr. Harvey, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, so this is a three-year grant, so looking forward into the future, after the next three years, then in terms of funding, should we want to keep the program, then the full cost will then be borne by the city.
So we did have this discussion during our, I guess, our meetings with Star Transit, they, they, the COG wants to start providing these transportation services to the southern sector in the Dallas County or the Dallas region, and so they fully anticipate this will be continued, this will continue to be funded by the COG at forty, I mean, at sixty percent, so it's not guaranteed, but as long as monies are available and these services are needed, they feel that it's, there's a pretty good chance that we will continue to get the sixty percent funding, as long as these fundings are, continue to be available through federal sources.
So if I understand you correctly, it, it's an, I guess, an ongoing commitment from COG to, to help provide funding for this particular service, because they probably feel like it's a benefit to mobility.
That's correct, as you're probably familiar with Star Transit, this is what they do, and so every year, they apply for federal grants, and they get federally funded dollars, and so they would continue to include the programs they're providing, because that's how they get their money, so they anticipate they would continue to get funding, as long as the funding is available by the federal government.
Okay, and I am familiar with Star Transit, it, it is extremely popular in the cities that it's in, and so I anticipate that once our community becomes aware of it, it will, it will blossom, so I'm in favor of it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank, Mr. Gutierrez.
Very quickly, to Mr. Harvey's point, can you talk a little bit about how well it's done in the southern sector, because I know that's primarily where they're focused, correct?
Yes, sir, I don't have that information, I know that Ms. Britton was going to be here, but she had an obligation, she couldn't make it. And based on my conversation with her, it has been very, very well taken by other cities in the area, so De Soto is already using it, I know Cedar Hill is in the process of also starting to use it. And now, obviously, there'll, there'll be us, I don't have the numbers as far as how many are using it, so I apologize for that.
No, no problem, thank you.
Mr. Mac Burnett, I see your back up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, I did have one more question for Mr. Garcia, my understanding of this program is that you will have access, for instance, you said, you mentioned Cedar Hill, you mentioned De Soto, I believe Mr. Harvey Siegalville has it as well, but these, you're able to use this service in all the service areas, so for instance, if you were a student and you were going to Cedar Valley College and you lived in Duncanville, that you could, could use this service to go to Cedar Valley.
And not just that, they have different programs that we're also exploring, which would be transportation to downtown Dallas, to medical services across the DFW Metroplex, transportation to, let's say, a Dart Center where you can take the Dart Bus, so this really does provide transportation for those that need transportation to work all across the DFW Metroplex, it's kind of like a what they call the first mile service, if you will, at some colleges you use where it gets you to where you need to go, and then you can take other alternate sources of transportation, so it can be really effective in that way, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to reserve my comments to, to the end, we already have this motion on the floor, which I strongly support, just want to mention that what we're looking at here in, in the, in a commoditization term is called micro-transit. And since we do not have Dart in the southern sector, what micro-transit does is provides individuals the opportunity to move about the region, and Mr. Mac Burnett had the question, Mr. Garcia answered very specifically it. They will even take citizens to the veterans hospitals, if necessary, for medical appointments, so it really doesn't make any difference what the boundaries are for where they serve, they serve today. It's a matter of how we, as a city of Duncanville, establish the first route, and as it has been discussed, this is on demand, as demand increases, Star Transit will increase the routes throughout the city. Now, they don't anticipate, as Mr. Garcia said, that this probably won't increase during the first year, because it's a pilot program, we'll gauge the citizens' acceptance of it and how it operates, but Star Transit is very, very well-known by the COG, and as a member of the Regional Transportation Committee of the North Central Texas Council of Governments, I sat and do sit on the R T C and approved the dollar amounts coming from the COG to be specifically applied to the city of Duncanville. And so this is how this is working, in fact, at the last city, at the last meeting of the R T C for the COG, we were informed by Shannon Stevenson, who was the operator, or the primary operations person for this with the federal government and the COG, that there are huge numbers of federal monies that are going to be coming down, and it's going to be specifically for electric vehicles, for E Vs, and so I asked a specific question at the R T C, is Star Transit eligible as a micro-transit provider to be provided with the funds for an E V as it comes into the city of Duncanville? The answer is affirmative, so as these monies come through the federal, comes through the COG, comes through the R T C, comes through the E D C, and then comes to us as the city in the budgeting process, this is a very, very strong movement to provide transit for our citizens, it's not necessary, a lot of people look at it for, for disabled citizens or senior citizens, but anybody can use this, and there's a lot of movement between our city and the inland port, in fact, that's one of the things that I was involved in with the southern sector, study for transportation. A lot of that transportation movement was concerning the north-south movement of people in transportation, and I said, what about the east-west movement of transportation, and they said, oh, yeah, maybe we ought to think about that. And so that's really the genesis of, of how this all began, and getting Star Transit involved with our city, and understanding this transportation, both north-south and east and west throughout our southern sector. So this is very, very positive, and thank you, Mr. Garcia and E D C, yes, sir.
If I may add one, one feature, since we're here talking about it, Star Transit does provide an assistance program where, free of charge, and these are helpers that have been vetted and pre-qualified, that if we have senior citizens that are disabled, or, or anybody that's disabled, or if they have a senior citizen, and they need help going to the grocery store, or going anywhere in the city, they can call and request a helper, and that helper's free of charge, and they will help them and escort them through the, you know, the, the grocery store, wherever they need to go, and then help them back to where they came from, you know, from their home, so that's a really neat feature that they do provide free of charge as part of their service, and at very, very low cost as far as the transportation is concerned.
Thank you, yeah, this, this is a major step for us, yes, Mr. Koontz?
Sorry, sorry, man, I just had one other question, can you go back to said twenty hours, twenty hours a day service? And so six A M. to six P M.
And that's, we can modify that, we can't do later than, I think, nine P M. per the contract, but we can start it as an example at five A M. if we needed to, but I think that's the cutoff, but we're going to be meeting with staff, and of course, we welcome anyone that wants to have input on that, when, what are the routes going to be, sorry, what are the routes throughout the city going to be, what are the timelines and where they'll be running, and they don't run on weekends, though, it is Monday through Friday, and if we were to request that, we'd have to obviously talk about that and bring it back.
Okay, I was just looking, because six to six is twelve hours, so, but we can, we can find the twenty hours where, wherever we want to.
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and, and just one last thing, it's going to be three different, three different vans moving throughout the city, so it makes up several hours between those three different vans.
All right, thank you. Council, we have a motion to approve, please vote. Unanimously approved, thank you very much, Mr. Garcia, for all your work, working with the COG, working with the R T C, and bringing this to fruition with the, through our E D C, thank you, and please thank the E D C for approving this as well.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Okay, we are now going to enter into three different topics, all three of which are going to be public hearings, and what I want to do is give you the ground rules for how we conduct public hearings in the city of Duncanville. As is described in our proceed, our rules of procedure, we give ten minutes in the aggregate for individuals who wish to speak in favor of an item, then I give ten minutes in the aggregate for individuals who wish to speak in opposition for a particular item. So it's not that each person gets ten minutes, it's those, I will call up individuals to speak in favor, city secretary will run a timer on ten minutes for that particular segment. Once the individuals who are in favor, and once the individuals who are in opposition finish their speaking, we will close a public hearing by a motion, all that does is close the public hearing by the city council. Then, we will then open it up for discussion with the council members, oh, let me rewind just a bit, the first thing that happens is, is a staff member is going to brief everyone on the item itself. Then, we will open it up to the public hearing, then we go to the discussion phase with the city council members. Okay, so the first item that we have is item C, conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of Hani Alkady applicant representing C W S Real Property Holdings, LLC, owner to include a specific use permit, S U P. for auto repair and services, minor, perenns, no outside storage, closed perenns, and adoptment ordinance to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map on candlelight estates. Third, installation block L, P T. Block one, ACS four point four-two-two, more commonly known as four-one-nine East Danielville Road in the city of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas, Mr. Warren, city planner, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The request is to obtain a specific use permit for auto repair and services, minor, no outside storage, that's the land use, the future land use map designation is opportunity area nine, the main street district. The zoning district is LOR, local office, retail district. The definition for auto repair and services, minor, no outside services, minor repair or replacement of parts, tires, tubes, and batteries, diagnostic services, minor maintenance services such as grease, oil, spark plug and filter changing, tune-ups, muffler repair, emergency road service, replacement of starters, alternators, hoses, and brake parts, performing state inspections, and making minor repairs necessary to pass said state inspection, normal servicing of air conditioning systems, window tinting, inspection services, diagnostics, and other similar minor services for motor vehicles except heavy load vehicles, but not including any operation named under auto repairs and services, major record slash towing services, or any other similar use. May include the retail sale of auto parts. May include the retail sale of auto parts. No outsor, outside storage is permitted to exist. Image on the left is an aerial of the property shown just north of Daniel Dale Road at the intersection of Highway sixty-seven. Image on the right is a zoning map showing the existing zoning being LOR Local Office Retail District with General Office Retail District to the east, LOR to the north and west and south. This is a general site layout where the primary structure is in the middle with the landscaping, landscaping around the edges of the property. And a floor plan layout showing the four bays of the, of the structure with a customer lounge, office space, and two restrooms and a storage space. Elevations of the property, the north rear elevation showing the four bays, the side elevation, west and east, and then the south and the front elevation as you would see from the street. The considerations are found in Section 6.05 of our Conference of Zoning Ordinants. The proposed use shall be consistent and compatible with adjacent land use and zoning. The proposed use to be consistent with the architecture and characteristics of the adjacent properties. The proposed use may promote innovative use of modern development concepts without having an adverse impact on adjacent properties. Proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city. Proposed use is an enhancement or improvement beyond the minimum standard set forth by the zoning ordinance. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the general health, safety, and welfare of the community. Proposed use would stabilize and improve the property values within the city. The proposed use would protect and enhance the city's attractiveness to residents, businesses, tourists, and visitors. The proposed use would strengthen and help diversify the economy of the city. So this is an image showing the property owner notifications that were sent out. We had ten mailings sent out, and we had no responses in favor or in opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of three to two with the conditions of a ten-year limit set on the specific use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. City Secretary, the timestamp on opening the public hearing is eight seventeen. Before I actually call individuals up, I want to make sure, because some individuals have chosen to speak on more than one of the public hearings. So I'm going to be careful in how I look at these cards and make sure I do the correct thing by each of you that has chosen to speak. So the first one that I have here is Ayesha Rourke. She does not wish to speak, but she is recording her opposition. The next one is Mark Graham. And please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Graham, four-ten Santa Fe Trail. It's real simple for me. We, that is supposed to be a gateway to the city, that, that.
Oh, I need to make sure we're in the, we're in the support portion of the public.
Oh, no, I'm not in support.
Okay, you do not show that. So please sit down. I'll call you back in opposition. The same goes for the next individual, Erica Browning. Support or opposition? Okay, we'll call you back up. Next is Emily Bridges. Does not indicate supporter or opposition? Opposition, so I'll call you back up. So we are still in the support portion of the public hearing. Let me see. Let me go through the cards that show C and D. David DeRoca, or DeRosa.
That's my husband and also my son, but they have gone back to work. They left their cars.
Cody Parman?
That's my son.
John Hill. Oh, which, never mind, wishes to speak in opposition to C and D as I see this card. So. Opposition there. So in terms of the cards I have, that completes the segregation of cards just a moment. Yeah. So now, any individuals who wish to come in forward and speak in support, please come forward. And the clock is running on the time minutes, on the ten minutes, sorry. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Ahmad Sam Ammofte. I'm working for Representative Omarco Investment Group, which is, we, we doing these things due to the business of the car washes, which is apparently is dying, especially with those self-car washes. So we like, we, we went and we looked at those location. And our, our mission to complete turn these things, okay, from dying business to active business, which is, we're going to go with the new building, new structure, you know, the whole things. Unfortunately, unfortunately, every time people hear auto repair, they think those metal building, tires everywhere, you know, slash, littering. The, the stuff we do is five stars building, five-star businesses, fully. Like, we did something in different state of, you know, different, I'm sorry, guys, first time I do this.
You're good, go ahead.
Okay, so we did this in a small city like Saksy. We did something in South Dallas. We're doing something in Mesquite. And we're doing right now something on Polk and I-20, which is in Dallas, okay? We do state-of-the-art, which is the places where my wife, my sister, my mom can go and sit, you know, relax, have a good time while their car is in service. So just I want to, you know, assure everybody, the stuff we do is not those mom-pop places. We do something professional, lighted building, secure building, twenty-four hours monitoring, security, which is going to be safe for the neighborhood, safe for the city, and safe for our business. And as you say, they say, you know, if you look good, we look good. And we both, you know, we try to do something really nice and fit the city. And we do have, I sent some, you know, some of our work to the city staff, but I don't know if they have it on the board or not. We can show you what we have in, in this business, and we have something really good. And we come to the city to add value, okay? So we add, we get from the city of the champion, and we give back the city of champion. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Interim city manager, I believe what we have just heard is from the applicant. And I would request that there be some communication between staff and city council during a hearing portion to advise us of, do we're listening to a citizen or whether we're listening to an applicant? Because normally, what we do during this process is the applicant has an opportunity to speak after the close of the public hearing to respond to questions from the city council itself. So I'd appreciate if you would, if you would help me out with that with staff, Mr. Brown. So time is still running. Any other individuals, not an applicant, who wish to speak in favor, please come forward. Seeing none. Okay, then I will open the, the floor to those individuals who wish to speak in opposition. And there's a time minute time, it sounds great. We're starting it. City Secretary, are you restarting the timeframe on this? Okay, so I have Judy Johnson, John Hill, Emily Bridges, Erica Browning, Mark Graham. Who wish to speak in opposition? You may come forward.
Emily Bridges, four-one-eight, Oleander, seven-five-one-three-seven. I'm going to also speak for John and Judy. They're not here, so I think they checked they did not wish to speak on their cards. Okay, so first I want to share my appreciation for the recognition of the National Small Business Week. And as a family business here in Duncanville, I want to extend thank you to the I Shop Small Initiative currently taking place. Now, I would like to touch on the auto repair shop proposed on the recent but not yet completed Daniel Dale reconstruction. While trying to stay engaged in the city's happenings, I've noticed that this goes against our comprehensive plan, which is a great plan. We have a unique opportunity here to create a beautiful gateway to Main Street. I don't think we really need another automotive service business, whether it's beautiful or not. I can honestly say I've never needed a service for my vehicle that I was unable to already get here within city, within the city. It's Small Business Week, and Main Street already has small, locally-owned auto shops that have benefited the city for years. Please see value not only in long-term businesses, but as well as the value of neighboring homes, and lastly, the wishes of our citizens. Not all money is good money. Considerations that were posted a little while ago says compatible with adjacent land use. If you start, it will continue. Thank you.
Erica Browning?
Erica Browning, four-four-two, East Cherry Street. I would also like to say that I'm in opposition to this, simply because it does go against what we have stated in the comprehensive plan as the zoning for that area. We have a lot of these kinds of businesses up on North Main Street and Camp Wisdom. And they might have started out looking nice. They don't look nice anymore. And I think perhaps investment might be made into buying out one of those businesses and retrofitting that building and making that into something that's really nice. Because this is not the area that we have designated in our city for automotive repair places. And it sounds like there's a lot of opposition, so I hope you will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Judy Johnson? John Hill?
They left.
Okay. Any other individuals that I didn't have a car? Oh, yes, Mark Graham?
Mark Graham, four-ten Santa Fe Trail. That is going to be an entryway. That, that whole area's been redone. Going to have a biking path, walking path, and the first thing we do is an auto repair place? I think the neighborhood deserves better than quickly filling a space. That lot over there where the car wash is stays so dirty. I'd like to believe that would change, but I think it would change much better with retail of some sort, rather than an auto repair shop. I think you need to give that some space, give it some time, and see what might happen when you get it completed. And if we could actually get some retail restaurants or something in there. I got to believe that everyone here would rather see restaurants, retail, rather than another oil change spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals present who wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second. We have a motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Contreras, a second by Mr. McNabb. Counsel, please vote on closing the public hearing. Thank you. The public hearing is closed at eight twenty-seven. Now open it up to questions or comments from the city council. Mr. Warren? And if necessary, you may call up the applicant. Mr. Contreras, first, please.
I'm just going to make an observation. I'll start by saying I'm in opposition, but I want to make an observation that, that's been mentioned by some of the citizens here. And that is that this is one of the few gateways that we have into the city that is currently undergoing a total facelift. The potential going down to Main Street for those older homes on large lots to develop over the next, who knows, five years to twenty years to become commercial properties that could hold not quite a number of businesses all the way to Main Street. I think we have to look at that and remember that is the potential of that entryway. Not that there's, I don't know that those houses, those large properties are for sale right now, but I could see that coming and being what people would prefer out there to have a growth in, in retail opportunities from that entryway to all the way to Main Street and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, so I want to just preface some of my comments and observations that it, I'm not questioning the quality of the business itself. It's just the use, the land use for that, that area. And I think mo, most of what, what I was going to say has been stated already. That it is a potential city gateway, and we've just spent a lot of time and a lot of money redoing the street, the infrastructure, putting in the, the hike and the bike trail. And so that, that is the definition of an opportunity area with the space that's there. And it's actually a historical home that's there right off of Daniel Dale. And so I did want to, on our report that we have, Attachment Seven, and so ten mailings were sent out, correct? And I'm looking at some of the, the addresses. Two of them are the same individual that, that don't live in the area. One of them is the seven-eleven. One of them's the bank. One of them's actually the applicant. And so, but none of these addresses belong to people that live in the neighborhood, which is Candlelight, which is immediately adjacent to that. And so, and that happens to be in my district. And so there has been some opposition voiced. There's been voice, you know, to this from people that live in that neighborhood, because they, they would like seeing that trail being developed. They would like to be able to walk out of their neighborhood, walk down the trail, potentially this trail connecting to trails that, that connect, you know, down Main Street, maybe even all the way up to Main and Center. And so there's that opportunity again, and, you know, they've expressed that they wouldn't like to walk past an auto body shop as soon as they got onto the trail. So I'm also in opposition to this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McNabb?
Thank you. Gentlemen, I want to thank you for coming here, and if it's your first presentation, I thought you did a good job. I have no doubt that you're trying to do a five-star quality business, but I'm going to simply say I am in opposition to this as well. And the reason why is simply it's not the highest and best use for the, the property, in my opinion. I would suggest that you talk with our planning team again and see if there is another use or place for you as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Question for the applicant. In our packet, it says, it's described in terms of what services are intended to be provided here. And it says, quote-unquote, "Customers will be in and out of this location in ten to fifteen minutes."
Exactly.
So I understand that for an oil change. I do not understand in a transaction time of ten to fifteen minutes for somebody that wants to do some other service besides just an oil change. So how do you intend to accommodate that turnover time that fast for some other services than an oil change?
Okay, well, our operation concentrate on oil change, mainly oil change, inspection, and really minor, minor repair, which is won't take, won't take that long time. So that's why we, we like to convene it for the people, you know? It's like those quick car loop where you don't have to get it from your car. But we have big seating area, so we can sit and wait on the car. But mainly, all, all the service, most of the services, let's put it this way, is going to be between fifteen to twenty minutes. So they don't have to wait too long. Okay, sometime, there's some exception, of course, you know, if they, they have to wait on some other services. But our main services, it's oil change and inspection. Okay?
Are you branded?
No, but we, we, let's put it this way, we treat people better than franchises, okay? Because the franchise where you put your car, you sit watching those aquarium and fishes or whatever, and the people doing whatever they're doing inside. Our team is prepared, you know, to show you what, what's your car, what diagnostic, what you have to do, what services you want, and you can do whatever you want.
I'm looking, Mr. Warren, help me out here. I'm looking at the, it's page A three of the architect's drawing that indicates the, the bays and the dimensions of the building. That one right there. So, sir applicant, so you were just talking about oil changes being the, the primary. being the primary here. That, is there some consideration to designating some bays to doing other than just oil changes? In case somebody wants to come in and have other services done, they can say, okay, you have to wait because you're gonna be in this bay? Or if all four bays is gonna be dedicated to oil changes?
That's exactly why. We're gonna put three with lift, which is, you know, dedicated for oil change, okay? And one to do services for, let's say, inspection, or changing light, or changing wiper plate, or, you know, so those minor things. Our main, you know, consultation is on oil change. And just, you know, for some comment I hear, this lot is like about fourteen or fifteen thousand square feet, okay? You bring any food franchise, they won't go and sit right there. It's too little to be, okay, for a restaurant, okay? So that's why we choose this place, because it fits our need and fits our business. And that's why we choose that. I know it's a gateway, and that's why, you know, when we, when you say it's a gateway for Duncanville, I know exactly it's a gateway for Duncanville, because we have to be really, really something different than everybody else inside, okay? Otherwise, we don't go, because we know there's a lot of places. But I know exactly what kind of businesses they have here, especially in this industry, okay? So if we're not different than everybody else, I'm not gonna go behind, you know, between these guys.
Okay. Going to, I guess it's the next page in the blueprint, it's A-four. There you go. No question, as I think it was already mentioned by one of the council members, that the facade, the changeover in the appearance from a car wash to this particular activity is most commendable in terms of the look of it, what it's gonna do for the business itself. Mr. Warren, I do have some concern about any activity that does automotive repair, that individuals who can't get their repair done immediately, that car sits on a back lot somewhere until those items that are necessary for the repair have to be ordered or come in. And it depends on the inventory that's held by that particular applicant. So any major, any automotive repair facility that we have in our city, there are cars waiting to be repaired because of waiting upon parts. So for those, that particular activity that's say that's being withheld on one of these bays, what kind of process do you see to eliminate these cars being left overnight for repairs that we see around our city?
Okay, first of all, we have a policy not to leave car overnight in our stores. It's, you know, just form of liability, which is, that's why we have to do same, you know, at least the same day service. And even when we, if you look at the plan for the parking lot, okay, we have extra spaces for parking lot, just in case, you know, customer's gonna wait or drop his car and come back, you know, to pick it up. So that's why we have even extra in the parking lot, so we can, you know, leave the car right there.
Okay, all right. I noticed, Mr. Contreras, you have your light back on, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Do you change and sell change and install tires as well?
Well, we can repair it, but there's no tire sales, no. That's totally different industry, you know, selling tires, because you need the special storage, you need special space, and, you know, totally different than our.
But you do, you do change and repair?
I mean, if somebody's gonna come up with the hole or something, we can repair his tires, you know, we're not gonna turn him off for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that, I believe that concludes comments and questions from council.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cherry.
Well, for Mr. Warren.
Yes.
So I've heard that, you know, and I know we have a lot of shops on Main, but do we have any shops that are just like this, without doing all the repair and?
Minor, minor auto repair. This would be a nicer version than what has been, than most typical minor auto repair shops that we see in the city. But no, I guess to answer your question, along the opportunity area, this would be one of the first.
Well, and just to, not in this particular area, in answer to your question, Councilmember Cherry, there is an activity similar to this on Clark and Daniel Dale that does oil changes and does automotive repair as well. So it's outside this opportunity zone, as described by our comprehensive plan and other council member, but there is one other like it somewhere in the city. I see, Mr. Koontz, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Just a correction for this, this opportunity area, there's several, you know, businesses that are very similar in this opportunity area. At Main Street and Daniel Dale, and the opportunity area goes all the way up to Wheatland Road. And so between Daniel Dale and Wheatland Road, there are several in the opportunity area.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And so, at this point, I don't see any other comments or questions. And council, as is the instruction, what we normally do is ask for a motion to approve. And then we make a motion, or we take a vote on the motion to approve. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve this item that is before us for this SUV.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember McBurnett, and a second by Councilmember Koontz. Now, council, please recall exactly what we're doing. A motion has been made to approve. If you desire to approve this SUV, you will vote yes. If you desire to oppose this SUV, you will vote no. So council, is that clear? So council, please vote. And we have unanimous rejection of the proposal. Moving on to item D, as in David. Conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding the request of Hani Alkadi, applicant representing CWS Property Holdings LLC. Owned to include a specific use permit for auto repair services minor, perends no outside storage, and adopt an ordinance to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map on Urban Kessler Shopping Village, TRS six and eight, zero-point-seven-one-three acres, more commonly known as three-one-five West Camp Wisdom Road, in the city of Duncanville, Texas. Mr. Warren, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The request is to attain a specific use permit for auto repair and services minor with no outside storage. The future land use map designation is opportunity area five. The zoning district is LOR, Local Office Retail District. And we are familiar with the definition for auto repair and services minor, no outside storage. The image on the left is an aerial of the subject, of the subject property. The image on the right is a zoning map showing the subject property being LOR, surrounded by multifamily twenty-one and General Office Retail District. The site plan layout shows an approach from West Camp Wisdom Road around the structure, and then exiting back onto Camp Wisdom Road. And the landscaping plan is the image on the right. This is an elevation of the proposed structure, showing six bays, and the rear elevation, and the south front elevation. This is a floor plan layout of the proposed structure. Considerations are found in section six-point-zero-five D of our comprehensive zoning ordinance. Nine mailings were sent out. We received none in favor and none in opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the processes that I described earlier are still in effect for this public hearing. And for that, we will open the public hearing on item D, as in David, timestamp city secretary's eight-forty-three. So to save time and understanding of all these cars that I've got here and categorization, I'm going to leave it up to those individuals who know that they have submitted a card to please come forward. So this is all individuals in favor of this SUV for item five D. Please come forward. Seeing none, all individuals who wish to oppose this item, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Emily Bridges, four-one-eight Oleander, seven-five-one-three-seven. I oppose it as I did the previous one, pretty much for the same reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals? Seeing no individuals further coming forward in opposition to this item, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Mr. McBurnett, seconded by Mr. Koontz. Council, please vote. This is simply closing the public hearing. Unanimously close the public hearing, timestamp city secretary's eight-forty-five. Thank you. So now, once again, it is time for any members of city council that want to ask questions or comments or observations. Mr. Koontz, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir, Mr. Warren. Question to you. So could you, so right now, this is on local office retail, right?
That's correct.
So could you give us just a brief description, you know, kind of in layman's terms, of what that designation means, and maybe why these properties have that particular designation at this time?
Sure. So a local office retail is a little bit more intense in use than neighborhood office retail, but not as intense as general office retail. So it's kind of a middle ground in your, in your retail districts. The major difference you see is, for example, what we're here today for, there's an SUV placed where in general office retail and commercial, that this use would be permitted by right. So it just gives, gives an opportunity for this body and also planning and zoning to hear on a case-by-case basis, particular items. There's also more typically neighborhood service, land use, than your more intense uses like commercial or industrial. So that's kind of what LOR falls on our permitted use chart.
Thank you for that. And you mentioned neighborhood services. So, you know, these particular properties, I mean, there's, there's a neighborhood within a quarter of a mile to the south. I mean, there's residences right to the north of it. And so, and we do have areas in our city that, where this use is allowed by right. Correct me if I'm wrong, right?
Yes.
So, okay, so there are other areas in the city where this, where it wouldn't require a special use permit to put an auto repair shop, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And just, pretty much the same as last time, is we do have a comprehensive zoning ordinance, we do have our comprehensive plan, and my feeling is that when we make zoning changes like this, or allowances like this, that we are essentially changing our zoning ordinance. And we do have a good comprehensive plan, and I think while there may be some risks in waiting for the right uses, that I've got full confidence in our economic development department to get us to where we need to be as far as the uses. So I'll be in opposition to this. Thank you.
Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this area on Camp Wisdom, a couple of months ago, I had to fill out a questionnaire for the Dallas Morning News. And one of the questions had to do with, what is the, one of the biggest concerns in District Five, which is my district? And the north side of Camp Wisdom is in District Five. My answer was that with the hundreds of cars that come off of I-20 every day, with the thousands of cars that go by every day, for those people that drive into Duncanville that maybe aren't, wasn't a destination, but maybe they stop to get something to eat, or to stop and get gas, or maybe stop at CVS. On the way in to Duncanville, and we're talking about gateways, this is a major gateway where there's Cedar Ridge, Duncanville Road, Main Street, and Camp Wisdom entrances off of I-20, which is one of the largest interstates in the, in the state. And the amount of cars that come and the amount of people that occasionally come into Duncanville for the first time, what they see is the condition of Camp Wisdom today, which, while it's not, I wouldn't call it blighted, it's dated, certainly. And there's a lot of work to be done. We have, it's an area where we have a lot of TIF money ready to go to work there to improve that. So I think that what we're looking for, improving the first impression of coming into our city, even if you're going to the middle of the city, your first impression is Camp, quite likely Camp Wisdom. And so what are we gonna do to improve that? Well, there's a lot of work to do. And I don't think adding another, another auto repair shop, at my count, I've got five on Camp Wisdom right now. I've got two auto parts stores, and I have three tire shops. And in that count, I'm including two repair shops that are within sixteenth of a mile on Main Street, right off of Camp Wisdom. Another one probably half mile or less up Duncan, up Main Street, if you go north of Camp Wisdom. So it's not like there's a shortage up there of places you can get your vehicles worked on. And given my, my statement that I've made about this being the entryway to Duncanville, what we're looking for over the next ten to twenty years, I think the comprehensive plan covers that. And I think to deviate from that is taking us away in the wrong direction for the future of that entryway. So I would be opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments from council, I have a few comments to make. To put this into visionary context, this is across the street from our new fire station going up. And with that, we have already had informal discussions on what to do with the old one. And the old fire station is definitely an opportunity that this city is going to embrace for some kind of entertainment venue, some kind of food venue, some very, very unique and different that we are going to repurpose that fire station for. And I think to place an operation of this type right next to what we consider to be a very unique opportunity coming in the near future to repurpose that old fire station when the new one comes online, it's just an out-of-place type of business. I do commend the applicant for the expression of money that's going to be spent to convert a car wash again into this type of activity. But possibly, if the applicant could consider the vision for this area, and as one council member has discussed, in terms of saturation and barriers to entry for another type of business of something of this sort, some other consideration could be given to that property that would fit to the future vision of this, of where we are today. I think that if that, if that comes into play, I think we have a very, very viable possible project for, as it's been discussed, as highest and best use for this property. So I just wanted to express that to you and to the applicant, in terms of looking just maybe a year down the road, in terms of when that, when the old fire station becomes available for some kind of repurposing, it could be just an enormous opportunity where everything would fit into a wonderful entertainment venue for something for our city. And as is expressed, Camp Wisdom is an area that needs some, some greater attention, and I think we're gonna be getting it very, very soon through the repurposing of that old fire station. I just wanted to input that for information and consideration for both you and any other individuals, the applicant as well. So with that, I don't see any other comments by our city council. The chair will entertain a motion to approve. This is item D, as in David.
So move. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember McBurnett, a second by Councilmember Koontz. Here again, once again, council, please understand, this is a motion to approve. If you approve of this SUV, you will vote yes. If you disapprove of this SUV, you will vote no. Council, please vote. We have unanimous disapproval. Thank you. The next item that we have is conduct a public hearing for consideration and action regarding request of the city of Duncanville for a text amendment to the comprehensive zoning ordinance and adopt an ordinance to allow carports by right, where currently a specific use permit is required. So once again, Mr. Warren.
Thank you. The request is for a text amendment to allow carports by right, where currently a specific use permit is required, as a note from the current use chart. As a note from the current use chart, carports are required to have an SUP on SF forty-three, SF thirteen, SF ten, SF seven, TF seven, MF fourteen, and MF twenty-one. The proposal is to allow them by right. This is going back to council direction from dating back to last year, where the process for, and the burden to obtain a carport on the general public has been viewed as cumbersome and costly and drawn out. Furthermore, in section four point zero four B, three B one, a carport may be provided in lieu of a gar, of a garage or port of share upon approval of a specific use permit. This text amendment, should it pass, will nullify the requirement for a specific use permit in this specific section of our code. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. As is our policy, we will now open this up to a public hearing. And the timestamp on the public hearing is city secretary eight fifty-five. So all individuals who wish to speak in favor of this text amendment to the comprehensive zoning ordinance, please come forward.
Erica Browning, four four two East Cherry Street. I am generally in favor of allowing property owners to use their properties as they wish. I would like to add that a carport or any structure outside of a person's home can have serious detrimental effects on the, the look of the neighborhood. And so I would like some sort of aesthetics to be addressed in the ordinance to make sure that it looks nice. I don't know how you do that, but I, I'm definitely in favor of being allowed to just put a carport up if you want, but I think it needs to follow certain guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of this issue? Oh, I'm sorry, change to this ordinance?
Hello again. Emily Bridges, four one eight Oleander, seven five one three seven. I'm in support of this. Let's save the citizens and save y'all some time instead of constant SUPs on carports. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this change to this ordinance? I do know that we had a citizen that was here that spoke in favor of it. He was the applicant himself. And I don't say that he is present, but, so, anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this change to the ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Mr. McNerney, seconded by Mr. Coontz. Counsel, please vote on closing the public hearing. Thank you. Unanimally approved. City Secretary closing the public hearing at eight fifty-eight. And now going to council discussion, Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the staff for bringing this back to us and making this change. It's been mentioned by a few of the citizens that it has been, in my opinion, a burden, been an unnecessary burden on the public to have to pay the fees to go before the P N Z. In addition to that, have to take the time. And likewise, it, it's a time that I think the P N Z shouldn't have to spend on a simple carport. Most of them are simple. There are some that are more complicated. I would like the staff to ta, address a comment that was made about the standards that we have in place for building a carport that would give us some control over the aesthetics of a carport.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Contreras. So one of the difficulties or hurdles that we would have to cross with, with the state law that prohibits building materials is upon municipalities. So we wouldn't be able to say, for example, it has to be masonry, it has to match, match the, the, the building material of the primary structure. But we can do things such as the height of the structure and the, the dimensions. This is all something that will be reviewed at the building inspection department level. It'll also be reviewed by the zoning, by the planning department with respect to if it's in a planned development district. For example, if carports are allowed in planned development districts. So there's still going to be a layer of review with respect to carports being allowed by right. But that is something that staff can, can look, look into.
Well, in, in response to your comments about the materials, I do understand that those state regulations that prohibit us from controlling what, what materials or finished materials are used. But we still, as you pointed out, we still have the ability to make sure that it is designed properly and uses materials that are going to stand up under the weight and size and wind resistance and so on. Is that correct?
Yes, and that, that will absolutely be part of the, the inspection process. That's part of the permit process.
Right. And then lastly, we also have rules in place that limit the, the locations that a carport could be placed on to the extent that it can't be right up against a neighboring property line or in front of the house, or some way that it's going to be more intrusive to the neighborhood.
Absolutely. So the, the standards, the setback standards are in, in effect for carports, just like any other structure.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Coontz.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to make sure I understood, because I had a similar question just about the, the aesthetics. And my understanding is that we, we cannot put any restrictions or any controls on to say that the materials have to match the existing structure or anything like that?
Correct. And that is, that's a House bill, I believe it was in twenty nineteen, perhaps earlier, that, that prohibits municipalities from, from regulating building materials.
Well, I, I, I am in, generally in favor of this amendment, but I would look forward to if, the planning department, you know, comes up with any ideas about how we can approach that, I'd be interested to hear them. Thank you.
Mr. Mc, uh, Mr. McNerney? Nope. Okay, all right. Yeah, the, the preclusion of building materials was, is, is state law. And we have, we, being municipalities across the state, have requested our legislative representatives to repeal this because of what it does to our city. And as of yet, it has not gone anywhere, just for informational purposes. So yes, in terms of, I had the same question that Mr., City Councilmember had. In terms of requirements that we do have that we can enforce, they will be exported to this text amendment that we have today in terms of, you know, the foundations and how it's constructed and so forth. So that's an assurance that we have.
Yes, so those, those are currently instated in our building inspections procedures.
Very good. Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments from council, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move. We approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Contreras. We have a second by Mr. McNerney. Counsel, please vote. We have unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now going to what was a consent item, agenda four B, and creating this to become item for individual consideration, five F, as in Fox. And this has been requested to be moved for item for individual consideration by Councilmember Coontz. And so with that, consider resolution authoring a sole source procurement with Texas Packer Loader Sales Incorporated doing businesses tech pack plus load for two all terrain litter vacuums in the expenditure amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred four dollars. And presenting, Mr. Tyler Agee. Mr. Agee, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, interim city manager. I'm going to speak briefly on the-
Why don't you lift that, lift that mic up to you. There you go.
I'm gonna be speaking briefly about the Madvac all terrain litter vacuums. These vehicles were first proposed to council on December twentieth, brought to you all by the emerging leadership class of the city of Duncanville, made up of emerging leaders, middle management employees. Their project discovered that the majority of the city's sanitation was upkept by the four full-time employees in the Parks Department, basically divided into two different crews, one for streets and one for litter, or one for parks. The goal of that project was to improve the beautification efforts in the parks, sidewalks, walkways, alleyways, and other pedestrian areas, or high-traffic areas of the city. The procurement of these vehicles would mainly affect the Parks Department, economic development, and also neighborhood services. So it would be a joint departmental usage of these vehicles to upkeep the city's sanitation. As mentioned, the cost of these vehicles together are a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. It's two of them. They're model number L N five zero, diesel engine vehicles. They come with a forty inch, inch, a forty-eight inch vacuum head and a seven inch hose that is used to suction up trash and different debris from in front of the, the vehicle as pictured. Some of the benefits of procuring these vehicles would be to reduce the manual labor of the Parks Department and city. So less manual labor for these full-time employees, because the majority of their day is spent on their feet, walking the streets and parks, picking up small trash and, and different types of litter. Sometimes that can be a hazard to them. So utilizing these vehicles would definitely help reduce the amount of labor they spend on their feet in, in the parks and streets. Another benefit would be increasing productivity. These vehicles are designed to pick up litter six times faster than, than manual labor. So that would reduce the amount of time they have to spend walking, and also they would increase the amount of trash and litter that they can pick up. A few more benefits would be reducing the environmental impact. So by reducing the amount of outputs needed to remove the litter, trash bags, gloves, things of that nature, less vehicle emissions from, from, from our bigger diesel engine trucks that we put on the streets and through the parks. And then with the better productivity of these vehicles, that would be less trash ending up in storm drains and waterways and, and things of that nature. The last one would be potential revenue opportunities. I believe when it was proposed to the council, there was a discussion about utilizing these vehicles for revenue opportunities. I know for our department in parks, we have a lot of athletic tournaments on the weekends that leave a lot of trash in the parks, as well as after holidays, big holiday events, we could utilize these Madvac's to expedite that trash pickup for those events. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Agee. Mr. Coontz, you asked for this to be, to move. Do you have any comments or questions for Mr. Agee?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Well, first question is, could you go back one slide? Could you explain again how it would create potential revenue?
So within my department, so our athletic tournaments, after some of the baseball, softball tournaments, we have a user agreement with our organizations that, you know, the coaches need to pick up trash after the events. But that's not always the case. They sometimes leave those out, which, you know, we want our facilities to be kept clean. We could then offer this service like other cities, like De Soto, Lancaster, that offer, they offer their employees to pick up the trash and, and do other activities in conjunction with those tournaments for exped, for extra fee.
So we could deploy them to other cities, is what you're saying?
Not necessarily other cities. So we would like to, you know, be a staple for the athletic community as well. So increasing tournament usage, but not burning out our employees by having them actually manually pick up a lot of that trash and stuff.
Okay. Do you know of any other cities locally that-
Locally, I believe the ones that they have, that these vendors have sold to would be Webster, Webster, Texas, Austin. They have some. Mesquite has some as well. And there's another Texas city that is evading me at this time. But those three for sure have them.
And, and what do you know about the, the maneuverability?
So they are small, all-terrain vehicles. They're designed to be driven on sidewalks, as you see pictured. So they would be able to more easily get to the, through the bike lanes and trails, unlike our city trucks. So they are, from what I've seen, pretty maneuverable to get into those tight spaces that are, that guys would have to otherwise walk to.
I guess, sorry, I was asking if you, your, your personal experience, have you tried?
I, I have, I have not had the pleasure of personally driving one, but I do look forward to it. It does look kind of fun.
Has anyone in our Parks Department had any experience driving them?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Okay. And these will be primarily used in our parks?
Yes, sir. Parks and streets mainly. A lot of the alleyways, I believe, economic development and neighborhood services has a lot of planned use for them as well, cleaning up alleyways and things of that nature and plazas and stuff like that.
So I, I wanted to, to, to bring this out, just, at, at least for me to express my, my thoughts, whether or not we have any discussion on it. But, you know, it was mentioned that we do have, I believe you said, four in our, our litter crew-
Yes, sir.
-that, that are handling, you know, the trash around the city. But that's not necessarily true, because we have a lot of citizens, a lot of citizens who go out and participate in the trash cleanups. And of course, we have our Keep Duncanville Beautiful board, and they have events all the time, and we have lots and lots of citizen particip, participation in that. And, you know, litter is a big problem in the city, and I think I've been vocal about that in, in times past. My belief on this, first of all, is that we, as a council, at some point need to have a very serious discussion about looking at solutions, you know, prevention when we look at litter in the city. And, and I'm not trying to use this language in a, a certain way, but instead of maybe throwing more money at this problem that we see. The reason why I asked about it, if anybody to use these, is because I've actually used one, not, not this particular brand, mind you. So I don't know about Madvac, but just in my involvement in parks in the past, I have used one of these. And we actually got out and said it'd be quicker if we did it by hand, at least the, the one that we were using. It wasn't very efficient. There was a lot of, you know, maneuvering, maneuvering around that was necessary, you know, going up and down on curves and things like that. And it became quicker when we just got out and did it by hand. And so, you know, I, again, whether or not there's any discussion, I did want to voice my personal opposition to this.
Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. So what are the maintenance requires, requirements on this type of vehicle?
Same maintenance requirements that our trucks would be. They, we work with Fleet to budget for these items. And they're manageable for the Fleet Department. So same routine inspection and maintenance. They're street-ready, so they would have to install headlights or a, a light tower, light beacon to drive on the streets. But other than that, it's the same maintenance. They're, they don't have, they're bagless terrain vehicles. So they don't carry bags. It's a metal drum that all the trash is collected into and then dumped. So that reduces some of our, our outputs as far as trash bags and things of that nature.
So if I understand you correctly, then we can acquire two, two of these vehicles- So, if I understand you correctly, then we can acquire two, two of these vehicles and maintain them with a minimal impact on our maintenance budget?
I personally have not, uh, reviewed all the, um, the, the discrepancies within the fleet maintenance budget, so I would not be able to answer that question.
Okay, um, and I guess that, I don't know if this is a finance question or a public works question, but, let's say hypothetically, we commit to buying these vehicles. How long do they last? And would these vehicles become a part of the vehicle replacement program? And that's my question, two questions in one, actually.
Uh, Mr., yes, I think Mr. Uh, Harvey is correct, it's prob- that particular aspect of the question is probably better served by the Public Works Department for the vehicle replacement.
Okay, Public Works come forward.
Yeah, Ms. Colton. Good question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, as far as, um, including funds in the Fleet Rotation Fund for the replacement of this vehicle, that would need to happen.
Okay, so, in, in your experience, how long does a vehicle like this last? Ballpark?
A ballpark?
Yeah.
Ballpark, I would say seven to seven years, maybe five to seven years.
Okay, alright, so, mm-hmm, that would probably be, um, I don't know, uh, twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars annually?
Yes, sir, if we, but what I would need to do in actuality is, I have not looked at this vehicle. I'm sure that there is a product life specified based upon a certain level of usage. So what I would be able to do is, after I've had the opportunity to review the, uh, product manual for it, uh, develop, um, a more, um, accurate, um, product life. But I would anticipate it would be somewhere five to seven years.
Alright, well, before you do that, let's, let's see what we do about getting it in the first place.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, um, there was something else I wanted to ask, but it escapes me, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Contreras?
Thank you. Well, you answered my life expense expectancy question. The vehicle doesn't look all that all-terrain to me. So my question, one question that I have is, how much do you expect to use this off of paved surfaces and actually on sports fields or around the areas where people gather and the bleachers and that, where it might not be hard surfaces?
Uh, so it is, uh, designed to be all-terrain, so we do plan on using it on, in our parks, um, to pick up, uh, trash, um, on most of the turf area, uh, baseball fields in, in, uh, general, but, uh, common areas also. So it's, um, if I had to give a percentage, I would probably say maybe, uh, forty-five to fifty percent for one of them. But mainly, it'll be, uh, streets, um, that'll be getting the, the most of the usage.
I'd like to see that on slick glass or grass, um, the wheels don't, just don't look like all-terrain. But having said that, um, go back a picture, one picture. So th- this type of area right here, I mean, I realize this looks like a commercial property, but that type of trash, how, I mean, do you find the trash gathered together like this, where this would really be the more efficient way to pick it up around the sports areas? Or do you find it more scattered?
Um, so in the vast fields and parks, um, it's definitely more scattered. I know, uh, after, uh, Easter weekend, Easter celebration, uh, it's all hands-on debt for our staff, uh, that morning or the Monday morning after Easter, um, because the, the trash is scattered all over the park, so it would definitely be more helpful, um, with a, a quicker method, um, than walking the park.
Thank you for that, and last question, are, are these available, um, in electric power versus diesel?
Y- yes, sir, they are, um, available in electric, um, I would need to look at the specifications for prices on the difference, though.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Cherry?
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide that talks about the, the benefits? So, as a business owner, I'm always looking for ways to reduce manual la- labor and increase productivity, and also less wear and tear on employees, and, um, you know, no matter how much we look at where we are, if we're talking about the future, the future's going here whether we go with it or not, so, uh, thank you for the presentation, it was a great presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harvey?
So, so you mentioned that there are a handful of other municipalities in Texas that have this equipment?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe this specific type, um, the Madvac, um, I believe it was four cities, um, mentioned by the supplier.
Mentioned by the supplier, okay, have we reached out to those cities and asked them what their experience was in utilizing this vehicle? And how reliable is it, and if they had a do-over, would they buy this equipment to begin with?
We have not.
Thank you.
Mr. McNabb?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor, I'd actually like a motion to table this issue.
Second.
Not a bad idea, I have some comments of my own that I think I'd like to ask some questions and get some answers to. Keeping that in mind, um, let me roll back to a technical thing in terms of procurement.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but I did make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second, I did not hear the second. Uh, we have a motion to table, and, uh, that was made by Mr. McNabb, seconded by Councilmember Cherry. Uh, Council, please vote on tabling this. Uh, we have, um, a five to one, uh, Mr. Coontz dissenting on tabling this particular item. So, uh, with that, I still have some questions, if I may, and I think, I concur, as I said, I've just voted in favor. Let me roll back to a statement in the packet that says, "Local Government Code two fifty-two point zero two-two exempts items from competitive bidding when statute's available from only one source because of patents, copyrights, secret processes, or natural monopolies." "I know it's not yours to answer, so I'm going to call on a procurement agent to give an answer to." "This must be justified for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar procurement." "In my mind, it must be justified that this is the one and only product available anywhere in the world, from any source, that says this is protected by patent, copyright, secret processes, or natural monopolies, and that's why we did not do a multiple-source solicitation, sir."
Actually, sir, uh, under section two fifty-two of the Texas Code, uh, an item that can only be obtained within a region can be treated as a sole source, and in this case, the manufacturers have designated by markets, by regions, and we can only buy from this vendor in this region.
But bottom line, I would presume that somewhere else in the United States, that these products are being manufactured by somebody else, even outside our region, which would mean our procurement could save tens of thousands of dollars by looking at a manufacturer outside our region.
Other region will not sell to us, sir.
I'm sorry?
Other regions will not sell to us. It's only the representative in this region that can sell the product to us in this area.
So, there's no other manufacturer, or no other provider, or retailer, or seller of this particular type of vehicle that's available from any other source in the United States?
There are other sources, but the way the manufacturers have designated the markets, we can only buy from the representative in this region.
And this region is comprised of how big?
Last time, I, I don't have the details right now, sir, but last time I checked it, I think we are covered by Texas, Oklahoma, and I don't remember what else.
So then, I, in the tabling of this, I would request City Manager, uh, that we have this examined in terms of ensuring beyond any doubt whatsoever that this is the only manufacturer that we could procure these vehicles from in our region for the expense of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. I think it would be to our benefit to, to understand that. Just another comment, observation, I know that, looking at this, I s- I can see the advantages of, of the vehicle in terms of understanding what it can do to increase our productivity. I think it's very creative to see the potential revenue opportunities, charging people for, you know, we'll go pick up your trash and here's what it's gonna cost you. One of the, the aspects I'd like to pull into this is that seeing this used for Easter, for July the fourth, for, um, Christmas, and these other activities that are huge in terms of our parks, I can see that this would be a great advantage. And I think one thing that we as a city need to consider in terms of utilization and increased productivity is the fact that we have, uh, done a, the right thing in hiring an event planner. And that event planner, is, that person's job description says, we are looking for a, what do we call it? A distinguished, a, a, an event that distinguishes the city of Duncanville beyond all other cities, like the Addison Boomtown.
Yes, sir.
And so with the, the hiring of that individual, and knowing that, well, let's look at, it was already mentioned in terms of what's going on from our parks and rec already. There's movies, there's dances, and there's things going on in our park, in Armstrong Park, uh, and so forth, that I can see trash is gonna be accumulated. And this type of vehicle would definitely be an advantage to, to our, to our crews, to increase productivity. So, I would put those comments into this aspect of tabling and things that could be looked at by City Manager, and, and coming back to us and letting just all these questions get answered for us, I think it's-
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it, it's big bucks, let's face it, and, and you know, I think the aspect of these little bitty wheels making all-terrain, I think there's a good point in that, too, uh, you know, it's just, and there's something down in my gut just tells me somebody else manufactured in this thing. And, uh, and, you know, the regional aspect, I understand, but I think we may look from the procurement aspect of saving some bucks by looking at where else we could procure a similar-type vehicle from another manufacturer. That, just my input, uh, for you, City Manager, to consider.
Yes, sir, I'll record everything.
Okay. Alright, so we, we have tabled what has become item five F. So we will now move to, we have moved, uh, let's see. We have moved from the consent item four C to item five G of individual consideration, and I will read that. "Consider approval of an ordinance of the city of Duncanville, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration by adding Article Five Procurement, having a procurement department for the purpose of purchase and requisition goods, services, and other property in accordance with state law, and permitting consideration of the local bidder's principal place of business awarding competitive bids and of procurement." And Councilmember Harvey, uh, requested that we move this to items of individual consideration, so, sir, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, so, my, my question is, hypothetically, l- let's say that we have an item like we just talked about, and we, rather than a, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, just for simplicity's sake, let's say we had, um, we went to a vendor and we could buy for a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, but let's say we have a local vendor that sells that same type of equipment. So, what would be the impact of the cost to the taxpayer if we gave the local business preference? What would be the cost of the equipment? By giving a local vendor, what do you call this?
Preference.
Preferential treatment, yeah, that's what I wanna say.
Well, when you get a lo- local vendor preference, you're putting, uh, tax dollars back, uh, these dollars back into the community for the economic development of the community, so therefore, that's why this code was, uh, developed, that's why legislature put it out so that, uh, cities could give local preference to certain vendors, uh, promoting small businesses in those communities. So therefore, it puts the dollars back in the community to generate, uh, economic development in the area.
It would, it would put dollars back in the community to the tune of, how much? If it costs, if it costs an out-of-town, if it's gonna cost the taxpayers and, from an out-of-town vendor, a hundred thousand, then if we get it locally, what would the price be, what would the price differential be?
Under the regulation of, uh, Texas Code two seven one point nine zero five one, the state law allows a local vendor whose price is within five percent of the non-local vendor to be awarded a contract. And by provision of, um, House Bill two sixty-eight, from getting in two thous- in two twenty-eleven, it was amended to state that five percent would be awarded to a local vendor for a construction contract of under one hundred thousand dollars, and five percent for goods and services under the amount of half a million. So if we have a bid coming in from a vendor that's not local, and the local vendor's price is within five percent of that vendor's price, we are allowed under the law to allow, to award it to the local vendor. That is why we are bringing this before you this evening, because the law requires that the City Council can adopt that law in writing. So, we don't have it in writing as at this moment, that is why we've not been out using it, utilizing it since twenty-eleven. But now that we're bringing it to you, because we have been having vendors complaining about this each time we have the community outrage, that why are we not allowing local vendors to participate and giving them this opportunity?
Okay, so the price differential could be five percent? That answers my question, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Cherry? Nope, oh. Yeah, I had, had, I had a comment, or, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McNabb, then I'll-
Alright, thank you. Thank you for explaining that a- a- as well. What, what's currently in the legislation, I mean, is that what you're talking about right now, that's what's currently in the legislation? It just hadn't been officially rubber stamped, but, but we're thinking ahead with this?
Let me clarify, sir. Um, it's been in legislation, the one that is currently being considered right now on the, I think HB forty twenty-five is the Minority Inclusion in Business Contracts Award. That is the one that is being considered right now. But this one I'm asking is the local preference, which cuts across all businesses in Duncanville.
Perfect, thank you.
So, okay, I, I had a question in, in terms of, we as a, as a council, since my tenure sitting here, we have always been concerned with ensuring that our major procurements include MWBE and HUB and, and et cetera, other, uh, forms of, uh, minority businesses, uh, to be ensured that they're included in our procurement actions. I, I read through this, and I didn't see that that was specified. And I know you just cited that there's state law that's being considered, and state law would be all-encompassing to say that, but I still feel that we as a city would be best served in our own ordinance to, to make some inclusion in terms of, that we would also include MWBE, HUB, and other types of organizational procurements to ensure that we're considering the broad spectrum of individuals that might be available. And I know that you said that local procurement would, would encompass that as an umbrella term, but I just feel maybe it would be, we would be better served as a city to have some specification, or specificity in this to say that we're also gonna have MWBE and HUB and, and D, E D I, and so forth. So just for your consideration and, and-
Well, actually, sir, uh, actually, uh, the HUB is required for any quote that we're getting for purchases of three thousand to fifty thousand. Uh, but for the minority in- But for the minority inclusion, it requires the city to adopt that provision. And in adopting that provision, in order to give it legal backing, we are required, under the law, to do a diversity study first, to even see that we have the minorities that will be involved in our contracts. This has not been done. Since I came on, I've been discussing with some other cities if it could be possible for us to come together, because it costs a lot. But the council will have to decide if it's something that the city wants us to do.
That has been brought up in previous budgets, and that was decided, it was not a priority, not enough backing on council to support that at its time, so that was taken off the budget. But in order to do that, this program that you are talking about, we would need to do that type of study in order to come back with how we would set that program up. And I actually had a conference with that this past week that talked about that, and the requirement of doing that, in order to do it appropriately and correctly within your community, we would have to do that type of study, disparity study.
So, did I'm understanding what I just heard, that what I, what I'm saying personally, that I'd like to see some identification in this of the minority businesses, is possible, but the best thing to do would be to move forward with what's being proposed today, but then it would have to be a council decision to come back and amend this to include the specificity that I think would be best for our city. Do I understand that correctly?
You would have to amend the budget to include the cost for that study, so that we could do that and then come back and propose to you what that study says that we need to focus on in this community.
So those cost studies would be for each individual procurement, or can we just say that every procurement's gonna consider the list of MWBE, HUB, black enterprises, and so forth?
Mayor?
Yes?
Excuse me for interrupting, but that's not on the agenda tonight. What's on the agenda is whether you wanna adopt a local option.
Well, okay, I understand that, and that's why I'm asking the question, because what I'm seeing is what's best for our city is not included in this law. So that's why I asked the question in terms of process.
I know, but it's not on the agenda.
Well, I felt it was, so I stand corrected that it's not on the agenda and off-topic. So therefore, my comments stand as they are in the record. So, Mr. Contreras.
The item that's under consideration tonight, is item 4C, is this to meet a requirement of current legislation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it would be, it seems simple to me, then.
It's not, Greg, it's not required, it's permissive. In order for us to use a local option, we have to adopt this ordinance.
I'll just make the motion to approve.
It says "may." Otherwise, I have to take the lowest responsible bid. This allows me not to have to take the lowest responsible bid if I have a bidder that's within five percent of the lowest bid.
So we have a motion to approve by Mr. McNabb, we have a second by, who was it? Mr. Contreras, and council, please vote. unanimously approved, and comments and observations as noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 6, Staffing Board Reports. Item 6A, receive the Parks and Recreation Department Quarterly Report. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, interim City Manager Brown. Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm here tonight to talk about the quarterly report for Parks and Recreation for the months of February, March, and April. We've had one new hire, a full-time hire for our Parks Department, Glenn Starkey, who's our crew leader for our Parks Department, and he's done an outstanding job. I've had a chance to actually to watch some of his work yesterday, and he's an impressive employee, and we're happy to have him. Some of our park maintenance measurables, some things I'm gonna talk about tonight, really, we don't talk about near enough, and, you know, the months of February, March, and April, really, our park crews are getting the parks ready for a very busy spring and summer season, so I want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the things that they do. A lot of things, again, are routine for them, but, and a lot of people don't notice it, but certainly when it's all said and done, they make our parks look better and do an excellent job of doing so. So, we go through all of our playgrounds through this time period, make all the repairs that are necessary, go through our grills, benches, tables, everything we do for the rental season, our pavilions, get a real heavy clean, so thanks to the guys for all the work they do there. Our athletics crew's getting ready for the seasons, both, actually, all three of the youth seasons for softball, baseball, and soccer all start in February and March, so they are well in season by now. In fact, we've hosted four hundred, almost over fourteen-hundred practices, fifty-one games, and then more importantly, we've hosted eight tournaments already this season. We partner a lot with some of the local cities here around us to host these larger tournaments. This brings in people from all over the metroplex to Dunkinville to play on our field, so our staff does a fantastic job, and people like coming to play at our Dunkinville fields. We get lots of compliments. And one bullet I didn't put on here is, we most recently planted a tree right outside the city council chambers here. Last Friday was the National Arbor Day event. We hosted a small ceremony with our staff to celebrate both Arbor Day as well as memorialize our former Assistant City Manager, Paul Frederickson, and I want to take a moment to thank Danny Johnson for his hard efforts in making that happen, along with his crew of Francisco Avale, Greg Thomas, John Cantu, Glenn Starkey, Juan Mendez, Andy Ramirez, Javonnie Bellman, and Jose Leon. They did a great job of planting that tree, as well as the unbelievably beautiful garden that surrounds it. So thank you. Horticulture crew, obviously, has done a fantastic job, as they always do this past quarter. We all got to enjoy the tulips again this year, so they planted forty-five-hundred tulips, have already taken up forty-five-hundred tulips, to plant the new spring annuals or spring plant, spring flowers. We also distributed hundreds of those tulip bulbs to our citizens. We made those available at our recreation center, and I tell you, I saw, I saw a steady stream of folks come in to pick those up, so those will hopefully will get reused in our citizens' beds for next year. Our irrigation crew has been focusing on enhancing all of our operations. They have applied miles and miles of irrigation to take care of in our parks and our medians and right of the way, and again, do a great, great job. We had two employees reach some real impressive milestones. Our Assistant Director, Tyler Agee, received the certificate, Certified Playground Safety Inspector certification, and Jonathan DeLeon achieved his Certified Professional Turf Manager. So congratulations to those guys. Our Keep Dunkinville Beautiful is always busy again with their cleanups. They also hosted their annual garden workshop on March 25th. They celebrated Earth Day, it was March 17th through the 22nd, and they also wanna highlight their upcoming event, actually this Saturday, they're doing a cleanup at Lakeside Park. So we certainly invite all of our citizens to come out and participate in cleaning up Lakeside, starting at 8:00 AM. Moving to our recreation center, we had a hundred and three new memberships sold during the last quarter. That was actually an extension of our annual January sale that we moved into the first week of February as well due to the ice storm we had at the end of January that prevented some of our citizens from coming in to sign up. So we did extend that a week, and again, there was a lot of folks coming in to do, take care of that, that deal. Also wanna highlight some of our programs there. Our Pickleball continues to grow, is now three mornings a week plus one evening, as we've added an evening event, but that just is an unbelievable program, not just in Dunkinville, but really worldwide. It's crazy. And I'll take a moment here to talk about for the Recreation Center and the Senior Center, we are looking to grow our programs and events and activities. So I wanna reach out to all of our citizens. If you have a hobby or a skill that you wanna share with the community in the form of a class or a program, please come see me. Or you can contact Noel Garcia, our Recreation Manager for both the Recreation Center and the Senior Center. So, we're looking to grow our programs. If you have something you wanna share with our community, please come see us. Some of our events we hosted this past quarter, again, our Princess Tea Party, our Easter Egg Hunt, we've had a movie in the park, and then, of course, last weekend, as was mentioned earlier, we had our Pure Blend Motown Experience Concert in the Park. So our upcoming events, one thing that's been mentioned several times today, but I'll say it again, is our National Day of Prayer, held this Thursday at noon at the Recreation Center. Our Movies in the Park will be May 13th, we've got Jumanji, The Next Level. Concert in the Park, May 20th, a country performance by up-and-coming star Peyton Howie. Our Traditional Memorial Day Event will be held Monday, May 29th, at 10:00 AM at a memorial park downtown, so I always enjoy seeing everyone there at that event. That's something that we do with our American Legion folks, so it's always a really wonderful event to participate with. As mentioned again earlier, we will be hosting our Best Southwest Juneteenth Event on June 17th, and we're excited about that. Yes, it will be the biggest and best that Dunkinville has ever seen. And then we have our Annual July 4th Event on Tuesday, July 4th. Moving to our Senior Center, this is, again, something that we are really working hard to increase our participation. We're looking for new events, programs, activities, but we do have a core group that really loves our Senior Center, and we're looking to grow for our community. We have our, a number of activities, lady trips, programs, activities, and again, of course, our meal service, which is a lunch service that's provided through DAAA, BNA, provides the meal to our citizens daily at lunch, and we are seeing about forty-five people a day through that program. And lastly, we'll move to our Bond Projects. I know we talked about these in our briefing session, but we have Harrington Park. Again, we have all of the latest details on this project. We're approximately $2.5 million over budget, and we'll be talking about that with you guys in the next couple of months, I know, as was discussed earlier in our briefing. The Trail Program, we do have, we did do the loop trail system, that we've did the markings on the streets for the on-street bikeways, and then we're just looking for additional projects to do. We are looking into the trail that you had mentioned, I think during the budget process last year, for the power line easement along Clark, and so we're working with consultant to get pricing on that. And lastly, Armstrong Park, we're excited, we're getting very close to starting construction. The contractor has initiated, has signified that he will be starting hopefully by the end of the month. He initially gave us a date of May 22nd, so we're hoping that that will hold true. But that project is gonna be very exciting for our community, and as a segue to that, we will be hosting a, one more play day for Kidsville on May 13th. We'll have free snow cones, we'll have, again, activities for the kids, we will have pictorial opportunities for people to see what's coming, for the new Kidsville on the splash pad, and then you will notice also that that event is from 5:00 to 7:00, and we also have a Movies in the Park that night, so we can go right from this event to our Movies in the Park for Jumanji later that evening. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, and Mr. Contreras.
Yes, thank you. I just wanna commend you and other staff for dedicating a tree in Paul Frederickson's memory. Could you remind me again where that, where the tree is?
It is right outside behind you here. So if you walk out these front doors, just go to the left. It's a nice big red oak tree with a nice big square garden around it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Council?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to, you know, my personal commendation for all the great events that have been taking place. And the pickleball, I went, a couple of months ago I went, and there was a couple of people there. Last time I went, I had to wait because there were so many people, and so, which is a great thing, and so I can see how that's starting to take off, and so I look forward to seeing, you know, any events, you know, special events that might be, you know, associated with it. I know that Richard, you know, is putting a lot of work into that. I was gonna ask about the trails, because it was mentioned about, if you could go back, it mentioned Encore and the initiated approval process with Encore for power line easement. So could you remind me of where that is exactly?
Sure. It's on the southwest quadrant of the city, adjacent to, I guess, coming from Dallas, there's a Encore power line easement that crosses Clark, and it goes across through Dunkinville, and eventually goes into Cedar Hill. This is part of the COGS VeloWeb plan to link the, all the local cities. At this current time, Dallas has not done their trail, nor has Cedar Hill, and there'll be some challenges to get into Cedar Hill because there is a railroad track in the way, so we'll have to work through that issue, but I know that one of the things that the mayor was looking to do was provide an exercise opportunity for citizens in that area of the community by creating this, it's about a half a mile long, creating a linear trail for folks to use in that area of the community.
You know, I'm trying to, mayor, so that's by Clark Road, there's a, yeah, power line, so...
South of Daniel Dale.
And it kinda heads in the direction of Cedar Ridge Preserve. I'm just trying to visualize where that is exactly.
It does, actually not, it will not be near Cedar Hill Preserve. It kinda, kinda crosses at a forty-five or a thirty-degree angle across Clark, through Dunkinville, and into Cedar Hill. I can provide you, I guess, an aerial of that, if you'd like me to, I can send that to you in a minute.
I appreciate it. And then, was that part of the Bond Project? Was that, or is this something different?
It'll still be determined how we're gonna find that. Again, part of the, working with Hafen Associates, is they will provide us some, well, let me back up, part of the requirements of putting a trail under the power line easement is Encore will require a professional design, and they have certain restrictions or certain stipulations you have to meet in order to do that, to be compliant with their regulations. So that's why you have to have a consultant do that work. So, once that work is done, they will also include a probability of cost that we can ensure with the council and then determine how we're gonna pay for that project.
Okay. Cause I do remember in, one of the Bond Projects was one million dollars there for on- or off-street trails.
Correct.
Could be, yeah.
Correct. It's one million dollars for Bond. Again, we spent a few cents on the on-street markings for the bike loop trail, but a majority of that million dollars is still there.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and just, it's a comment to what Mr. Stevenson said about the COGS VeloWeb. There is a possibility for achieving some grant money from the COG as part of the VeloWeb throughout the entire 16-county area. So looking at that, it may be some offsets and costs coming from the council, from the RTC and COG.
We would definitely get the grants.
In the future, yeah.
Yes. It will be a significant cost. They require the trails to be twelve feet wide, which is almost the lane of traffic, so their trails, due to their specifications that they require, being they being the COG, through the VeloWeb, they can be pricey.
Okay. All right, seeing nothing else. Mr. Stevenson, thank you so much to you and your staff, Tyler out there, and everybody involved with what we're doing, and I see, you know, the event planner present, thank you very much for that, and looking forward to everything that y'all do, and taking very, very good care of our seventeen parks and in everything. There's so many people that are so thankful for our green spaces.
We have a great team, and so I always wanna say I appreciate my team, they're great people.
Thank you, thank you. Item 6B is in Bravo, receive the monthly financial report as of February 2023. Financial Services Director, Atmore. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, interim City Manager. I'm here tonight to go over the financial report as of February 28th. I think all of you guys have had an opportunity to peruse this report, so I'm just gonna kinda breeze through it and then look for any questions that you may have on the report. If you take a look at general fund, you'll see that the revenues we received, about forty-eight percent, the target for this time of the year is around forty-one point six-seven percent that we should have received revenue at this point. So general fund at this time is exceeding that target. The expenditures are at thirty-one point eight, so staff is doing a good job in holding their line on expenditures, so we are well within the range of, to meet our targeted budget for the general fund. Included in your report is the details of the revenues by category, so you can take a look at those and see how so you can take a look at those and see how they are progressing along. So I will just kind of fast-forward to them because there are a lot of them, there are a lot of codes that you can kind of look through. So if you want to fall asleep tonight, you might try reading this. Then I wanted you to take a look at the sales tax allocation. We do this every month. I include it in your financial report, so you can see as of February what we received. If you look at the comparison for fiscal year twenty-two versus fiscal year twenty-three, you can see that each of these months that we have received of this year, this year, that apply to fiscal year twenty-three, we've received a little bit more, so you can see sales tax is, is on a path to meeting budget or exceeding budget at this point, but things can change, so hold on till you see, we not do with the year yet. And so the rest of this report on sales tax, you know, our sales tax is broken down into sales tax for property tax relief, that the citizen made that election, as well as the city's sales tax and half a cent, half of one percent for economic development, okay? This is a whole list of expenditures, and these expenditures are done by the department, so you can take a look at each department's expenditures by their organization, by the departments that they are segregated by, and see how they are progressing in their budget for this time of the year. And I'll just fly through that, you can also read that. Also is the use of fund balance. Some time ago, a couple of years ago, the city, this is the last time the council made a decision to do one-time fund balance projects, and so these projects are still in that fund. The major project in that fund right now on use of fund balance is the P twenty-five radios for the police department. So we, we set aside over two million dollars for those radios, and so we're still working on spending those dollars. This is the utility fund, this is the operating fund. You can see we are exceeding the revenue that we did last year by a slight amount, and also their expenditures are on target, they are still under the forty-one point one percent. So we feel like, remember, this seasonal, we're coming into the summer months, so the utility fund, the revenues will kind of accelerate during that time of the year. This is the utility CIP fund, this is where we do all the capital projects. Right now, you can see that we have not really transferred the money from the utility operating fund over into this fund. We know that they had a balance coming into this year, around two point five million, so the next transfer, we were, in March, you will see a transfer into this fund from the operating fund to continue to operate, fund the projects that are supposed to be done in this fund. We also are set to issue bonds for the utility fund as we had approved in the budget, and so you see the five million dollars that's budgeted in the revenues for the utility fund for the CIP projects. I wanted you to see this fund, this is the utility meter replacement fund. Remember, we set aside a million dollars for meter replacements, as well as to start a fund for smart meters. Later on this year, we will start looking at that. One of the things that we were doing right now is trying to stabilize the utility billing system to make sure we were ready to take on that project, and that when we do take on that project, the, you know, the connections, the IT is ready to, in order to deliver the service so it can be implemented correctly. Economic Development Fund, this fund is, is doing well, it's funded with sales tax dollars, so you can see how they are doing. You also have the Field House Fund. This fund is also still running a deficit of one point four to one point five million dollars in the fund balance. And the rest of the funds, you have your, your special revenue funds. There are funds, I know some members of the council had asked about the PEG fund, and that is a fund that is funded by cable, what we call PEG fees, and I wanted you to see this fund because it was pointed out last year that we was focused in on. So that fund is part of our special revenue fund, and you can see the balance that got brought over as well as what we've been adding to it thus far. We also have the ARPA fund, which was talked about slightly today, people are requesting ARPA funds, and you can see the balance that's left in it at this time of the year and what we've actually spent and what we've budgeted to spend. The debt service and the capital projects funds, these are all your funds, including the fleet replacement, IT replacement funds, and you'll notice that on this report that the IT replacement and the fleet replacement, there are two funds of that type, and that is because in twenty-two, we, we added a fund to change kind of the nature of the IT and the fleet replacement. They are not internal service funds, internal service funds are really funds that are making charges to other departments, and that is not the case, so the nature of those funds changed. So we implemented two new funds to take on that characteristic so that they can be more in line with capital projects replacement fund types. And then the last two funds are our other enterprise funds, which is the drainage fund and the sanitation fund. Both of the revenues for these funds are, are charged or billed by the utility billing division, and so that's where our revenues come from there. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Can you go back to the EDC fund? So five months into the fiscal year, expenditures and revenues would normally be expected to be forty-one point six-seven percent of budget.
Correct.
Expense line seventy-two supplies and materials is fifty-four point eleven percent. So why is that variance there?
That's just the nature of the spending of the department at this time. I mean, we would have to go back into the detail lines, and, and I will get with economic development to see why that line item is over, is gone over at this point. But overall, they're within, they're under the target, really, basically. So what we see right now is that it's too early to tell at this time of the year of if they're going to go over or under their budget. I suspect that down, a little further down in the year, this will all normalize and become out, and become out to what they should be to target it.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you a list of departments like that, and I'll see what happened, based on your explanation. Thank you.
Well, basically, we can go down, down into the details. I can give you a sheet that'll show you every, every optic code that's in those line items, so if you want that details, I'd be happy to provide it for you.
Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your report, Ms. Atmore. I, I had a question because, because I'm, and I need, I guess I need some help with recalling this, but I know that we had set money aside for, earmarked it for AMI coming in, and the number that I always remembered was three million dollars, and then we were trying to get a matching grant because, because we were talking about roughly eight million dollars when we were doing that. So when I saw a million, I'm, I'm just a little bit, I guess, confused, so can you help me with that, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. In the budget last year, we had agreed that we would start a new fund, the meter replacement fund, because what was done at the city is that we, there was no meter replacement program. Basically, what we did is that if a meter broke, we were scrounging around to find meters, to buy meters, and then with the supply chain, it became difficult to find meters, and so we had customers out there waiting. So this fund was built to have, to help us with that effort, as well as to start out a fund to take in monies for the AMI system. Now, we did apply for a grant, and we are waiting for, to hear from that grant, and that was one of the things we talked about in the budget process, is that when we applied, we were going to see if we got the grant, and at that stage, we would tell if we need, how much we needed to fund the meter replacement fund. And that's why you only see a million dollars right now, because we were waiting to see how that would turn out, because that's a matching grant, and so we would have to match it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is actually for ICM Brown. If we could get, I'd like to request just a summary of the ARPA fund uses to date, and then just review how much, you know, how much, I mean, how much of those funds are still available and what they've been earmarked for, and just, just a review of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Atmore. I appreciate all that detail and the background information. It's a tremendous amount of work we do. Thank you and your staff for all of that. Thank you. Go to our item six C, receive the library quarterly report.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. Hula Velazquez, Director of the Duncanville Public Library, gave the quarterly report. Since I haven't spoke to you in a minute, I'm going to give you some highlights from twenty-twenty-two. Twenty-twenty-two, we offered two hundred center three programs with over six thousand attendees. We are, we had over eleven thousand hours of public computer usage. We answered over twenty thousand questions in person or on the phone. We checked out over sixty-one thousand items to our citizens and added about five thousand items to the collection. We also distributed about eight thousand food items through our little free pantry program. And then we had about over eighteen thousand items that were transferred in between the Best Southwest libraries. So currently, we are fully staffed. We have our three new part-time clerks, Jennifer House in October twenty-twenty-two, Mary Ellen Williams, December twenty-twenty-two, and Hope Barton in February of this year. We had three staff members attend the annual Texas Library Association Conference in Austin in April, and the attendance of excellent sessions and brought back some information that would help us serve our citizens better. Upcoming programs that we have in the library, we have our Star Wars Day Free Comic Book Day program this weekend, Saturday, two to four, which should be a very fun program. And we also just added a new bike rack to the library, that, thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department for assisting in that, and that's what I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Velazquez. Any questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Harvey.
Just a comment, I, I'm aware of the fact that the library has a very faithful constituency, that some of them come every day to utilize you guys' services, so my compliments to you all for the work that you do.
Thank you, and I have excellent staff, so I dedicate it all to them.
And then just a quick comment, I was up there this week and noticed the new bike rack, the Reed.
Yeah.
And it's really, I'm going to take, take another look at that, it's, it's an exceptional piece, and to be able to, and I know that what we're doing is proposing or asking our citizens to be more mobile on bicycles, and to be able to put this in our library, I think is a wonderful addition.
We actually had somebody tied up to it today, so we were very excited.
Very good. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Velazquez.
Thank you.
We do appreciate you and your staff. Thank you. That concludes our normal business, and as I stated at the very outset of our City Council meeting, we are now going to recess our City Council meeting and undertake executive session. City Council shall convene at the close of executive session pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero seventy-one of Texas Local Government Code to seek legal advice from the City Attorney regarding Article Two, Section two point one zero of the Duncanville Public Library Charge and City Council.
I'm going to do a little bit of a review of the new project. So, we have a lot of things in common, right? We have a lot of projects that we need to work on. And we have a lot of challenges to face. So, we need to work together, and I think it's important to do this because we need to work together. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems. And we need to work together to solve a lot of issues. And we need to work together to solve a lot of problems.